6:35, we call the Halifax Planning Board into session. Members present, Mark Meilius, Amy Troop, and Gordon Andrews. On the agenda, we have a site plan review for Walmart at 6:30. Dave Mosco, discussion for planning board position. Tim Frobowski, discussion for planning board position at 7:00. 7:15, Pastor Lane. 7:30, public hearing for the manager of state to continue. Discussion for... eleven, Brian Aducci. Secretarial responsibilities and duties, bills and minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Motion to accept the agenda as read.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Okay, Walmart?
Good to see everyone. So, last time I was here, we had a discussion about Walmart would like to remove six parking spots and transform to a total of 13 parking spots dedicated for online grocery pickup. At the same time, they'll be... Crosswalk from this door into the... across to the few parking spots. There will be a few, six or seven adjacent to the buildings that are remaining. That's what crosswalks dedicated for. They intend to also add two directional signs to direct traffic around and away from the general parking. Are you looking at any of this?
Okay.
So, we tell everybody to go this way and around and away and around from everything. There's already an existing demarcated, painted section of the building with a sign that says "Pickup," so that should also help to delineate and direct people as to where to go. They also intend on adding, I believe, five wall packs adjacent or on the building to increase lighting at nighttime for winter conditions and so forth, with the sun setting earlier. That's pretty much the gist of it.
Did we get our site plan?
Oh, the parking numbers, sorry.
No, don't be sorry.
Yeah, so the parking numbers are on that sheet as well.
What was the store size?
The fact that, I think the required was 1,000 and change, but they have, what, 589 spaces, 20 of them are accessible. They are not removing any handicap parking spots. They're not on the side of the building over there. So, the 45% being the grassed in the area in the back of the building must have helped alleviate per year town standards, and this is permitted reduction in the amount of parking required.
So, that's the required number? Or that's how many they have?
That was required in the beginning, and then we changed our bylaws, say that if they had the green space, then they could reduce to one spaceful every 175 square feet, which would give them that.
And how many do they have? That's how many they have?
No, we actually have more than that. 689 spaces.
Oh, okay, so that means that you're not gonna...
Yeah, we're still above...
689, not counting all of this.
Correct, yeah, and that's a field comment.
Okay.
They can pack out there if they had to.
If they had to, yeah. Yeah, I believe someone from the zoning last time told us that they put some kind of impervial, drivable stuff underneath the lawn.
Yeah, like a cement block that has fingers up. You put the dirt in, you can still pack on them.
Yep.
It'll green up. That's what this whole area is.
Yep.
Okay, is there any questions?
I answered mine.
And there it goes, that's right. Any questions for them in the audience?
Okay. Make a motion to accept Walmart's... Do I have to read anything specific? Site plan review submitted on October 10th, 2019.
For the...
For the pickup area, grocery pickup area, and the reduction in parking spaces by six.
Do we have case numbers now that we're assigning to these? I think to the point you made last time of trying to identify, like, site plan review numbers or anything like that.
Modify or reconfigure anything on the outside and anything in the lots. I believe that the private way already exists.
So, would you take that oddly shaped parcel, the entire parcel, to be the way? I understand there's a road, that's actually a road that's there, right? But how do you define the extent of the private way?
If you could flip the page, I think that there's a way to...
No, we probably would refer back to the original site plan. Okay. Joanne, can we refer that back to the original site plan? To reference this back to the original site plan number?
I don't have the original. Is that what you asked me for, the original?
For the number, for the site plan.
Okay.
I believe the town clerk might have that.
Yeah, it's down in the basement. Yeah, I could get it from the clerk.
Yeah, just so that this gets referenced back to that. Okay. So, the motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
Business Insider this week that over 30-year period, you get over 120 weeks back if you do any online grocery pickups, the amount of time you spend in the shop.
Oh, really?
I need to a supermarket, yeah, I got a copy of it right there.
That's quite a bit.
Happened to be online, I was like, you guys...
No kidding. It's a selling point, right, though?
Is that plan the same as this one?
Uh, yeah, no changes. Would you like a coffee?
If you don't mind.
Oh, not at all.
It's easier to pull that out.
Yeah. Most towns, buildings, that's fun. Hard to read.
Plus paper.
Yeah.
Wasn't salt there?
Actually, when I put that down, this was off to the side. I wanted to keep it.
Is that the same thing?
I'm not sure, this is Walmart. This is the original package.
I think that was with it, too.
Okay.
Dave?
Good evening.
Good evening. Introduce yourself.
All right, David Moscio, I live at 1610th Avenue in Halifax. I've been a Halifax resident, say, a little 40 years now, about that. I seek the same thing that we all do as residents here, is fair government, and that everybody in town should be notified or educated about the goings-on in the town. So, I guess my volunteering as a planning board member would be to help instruct our fellow residents as to how things should be prepared and be done within the letter of the law of our bylaws and the way Halifax wants things done to keep us within character of this town, which is one of the reasons why I came to this town, mainly because it's a small, tight-knit community, but it's got the feel of it as being a small farming town, where my children, I have three kids, twin boy and girl, and a 14-year-old, they're eight and 14, and I want them to have kind of what we grew up with as kids, which was a refreshing area to be in and know that they can go out and play and not feel like it's overcrowded or not really a city feel. I attend, or have attended, quite a few, if not as many as the town meetings as I possibly have could over the last four years. So, I'm an active member in the town and looking to do good, help this town succeed. That's what we need.
Excellent. Yeah, I think you've probably been in with some of the mud fest and things, right?
I've been in with Bob, helping him.
I just thought I'd recognize you from some of our meetings, showing the...
Actually, I lived next to John Soroco for a little while. We had a little run-in with him and ended up, after it was all said and done, and John kind of understood where I was living, the guy that owned the house, we weren't bad people, we were there actually making the neighborhood better. It was 37 Carver, looked like the enchanted forest in there when it was originally purchased. There was trees all throughout the place. I've done a lot of landscape work over there, a lot of, you know, site plan work over there with the owner, built a beautiful stone wall, you know, put in a lawn, garden, and then we invited John over after everything was all said and done, and we had a 4th of July party, and John and his wife came over, and we all had a pleasant time. You know, John kind of misunderstood how things were going and realized that what Joe, the property owner, was doing to his house was gonna help John's property increase, which is what I hope for all of us as far as our residents go, you know? Making my own home look good and helping others push forward with that. You know, one thing I believe in is being fair, and if there's something that I've learned over the years with the industry, I'm a heavy equipment mechanic by trade, and a lot of the things that I've done throughout the years is, it's almost like with some of the corporate companies that we have out there, they're more apt to punish people rather than teach them what needs to be done. That's all people need. Not everybody knows what the laws are. Not everybody understands what the laws are. They need people to teach them and guide them, not penalize them. If they refuse, okay, well, that's a different story, but if we can guide them through this stuff, that's what, really what we're looking for, is to make the town better so that they have officials that they can go to in a town hall and say, "I need help. I wanna put a sign up for my business. I want it to stick out well. Well, what are we gonna do?" You know? So, you know, I've watched a lot of you, I know you don't know me very well, but I've been to quite a few of the meetings.
Yeah, I've seen you in our meetings.
You know what I mean? So, you know I'm involved? Any questions? Amy?
I don't really think I have any questions there.
Do you have anything that you typically have to do at night? Because I know sometimes I get bogged down in other appointments and things like that that cause me to be 10 minutes late every single time.
I do have a job that requires me to travel. The good news is, is that the company I work for also understands that I have children and I need to be home for them as well. So, my heavy travel days are generally at the beginning of the week where I don't have the kids, and usually the middle to the end of the week, I have the children, so I'm generally home. So, I think I can make it pretty much. I know it's a dedication to get here. I don't like to be late for anything. I hate being late, so it's one of my pet peeves.
And it is first and third through space?
You applied to the zoning board also? It looked like from the talent bank form?
Whatever I can help this town with.
Are they actively taking people on, or is this...
No, but the talent bank form did ask what I was interested in, and I put down what I could do. You know, I mean, whatever it takes to help this town succeed, you know?
That's a good idea. I think they hold these on record, too, so if something does open up, they can still contact you.
I mean, it's not, it's not like, you know, we're gonna take over the world, but it's just, you know, I'm willing to give my time up for the town, and if I can help in any way, and that's what it was requesting, was where else would you be interested in? If I do get into something and find more interests in other parts of the town, I'll do the best I can to help in that, you know?
Yep. This is the only board right now that you're talking to, or the only...
It's the only one I talk to right now.
Okay. What's the term that we're looking at, too, by the way? Is it...
Only until May.
Until May.
Elections come up in May, and then if he wants to pull papers at that time, you have to run for the position.
Okay. So, it's only filling... Get reelected back to the same position, right?
Yeah, it's only filling the unexpired term until the next election.
Okay.
And then at the election, be running for that unexpired term, unless Jonathan was up in May, I don't...
I don't know what the timing is.
I think I was up last year, so...
I'm up in 2022.
I just got on, so I'm not up.
Was that a five-year? Or was that an unexpired?
They're all different lengths, right, aren't they?
No, they're all five-year.
But they came on a different schedules depending on when you came along, right?
Like, I took in for someone else, and my first thing was like a year and a half, and then I started a five-year, so...
I'm on a five.
Okay, but they have five-year terms.
Okay.
One up every, every year for five years. So, it is a long commitment, though.
Gets to be off in college, at least you'll just one by then, right?
Well, I mean, you know, the commitment's simple if it's something that you wanna do, you know what I mean? If it's something that you're interested in keeping with the scope of what the town wants, you know? I mean, that's really what it boils down to, is getting this, helping this town.
I like you.
So, the next one, the next term would expire in 2021 for someone that we don't have, or I'm in 2020, and then we, there's a vacant spot for the 2021 spot.
That would probably be the one that's open now.
Yeah, so that'd be like a two-year term for the first stretch after you get elected, right? Somebody's getting elected, right?
As long as you pull, as long as you do the papers. Somebody will get in.
How many total seats? We have five, all right? Okay, do we take alternate, alternates, too? Do we need to?
No, not to the elected. The zoning board does, that's pointed.
Okay.
Okay. You have any questions for us?
No. I have a question for you. How do we ultimately make, is it our decision to make, or the selectmen have to appoint?
Between us and the selectmen. So, we each get a vote, each of the selectmen get a vote.
As individuals?
Okay.
Pretty simple. All depends on who's files the biggest.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
I tried to repost that, but what?
So, I don't think Tim's here yet.
Is he, is he coming? I thought I saw an email that somebody wasn't coming.
Uh, that was Don Triani.
Okay.
Right, Triani was not coming in.
That's Pastor Lane, right?
No.
No, that's Autumn Lane.
That's Autumn Lane. And did we hear from Tina? From Pastor Lane?
I did hear, the only person I heard that wasn't coming was...
Don.
It was Don.
Okay.
Did we end up reaching out to anybody about drafting a letter? Where did we end up last time at Pastor Lane about getting something together? Reaction items?
All right, as far as...
That was never, we never voted on that, but we had, excuse me, I don't know. Larry Mayo was here this morning. He went through the whole folder. He took all the information that he needed, and he's gonna make the consention about that and get back to us and see the next steps that we need to do for Pastor Lane.
I talked to the new owner of the lot, and he said he might be interested in just turning it back to the town.
Oh.
And that's macro? Yeah, so I think that, you know, I mean, he's been contacting multiple times and hasn't come to the meeting, so it's difficult to, can't hold on, but...
Yeah, he was here one time, was that July?
It was a long time ago.
My conversation was with him that he, he said that the estimate he got for the repairs on the road is $150, so...
Which is consistent with what the engineering report was.
So, he's kind of like, really just, it's kind of a wash, so... And I said, "Would you be interested in turning the lot over to the town?" And he said, "Yeah, I would consider that."
So, that's a tax deduction at that point, right?
I don't know how that works that way, but...
That he would get his payment back, essentially, if you're able to deduct an equivalent amount, depending on what it was valued at?
Yeah, it's a possibility there. So, I'll get in touch with Larry Mayo, then.
Oh, he's gonna get in touch with him.
I'll get in touch with him and tell him what I have.
It was just today that he was, he spent some, you know, quite a bit of time here, going over everything. He took, you know, we gave him all the information that he needed.
Because if he doesn't have to go down the avenue of trying to take it...
So, you wanted to kind of get anything up before he starts?
Yeah, I'll give him, I'll give him a call tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd save the town money if we didn't have to go herad action.
To clarify, who came down here to do what?
Larry Mayo is the town council.
Okay.
He's not land-use town council, he's the regular town council.
Is he in-house, or is with an external firm?
No, he's external.
Okay.
He's the one that was at town meeting.
Okay. And he was looking at what it took to take the land?
Yeah, as far as what the town's next step could be.
Right.
And I know when we did Autumn Lane, we spent quite a bit of money with attorneys, and it didn't really go anywhere, so...
And he would also be the one that would be able to advise on what kind of agreement you need to get into place in order to accept a donated parcel, essentially?
Right.
Right, he just wants to get the law right and see what, you know, needs to be done next, so he's gonna make the determination, probably sometime next week.
And then even theoretically, conceptually, what would we do then? We would sell the parcel first and use the proceeds from selling it to fix the road, or just fix the road and then possibly sell it afterwards? Is there even, have we thought that far ahead?
I think the town would have to consider, I mean, it would have to be something that's done at town meeting, but it would have to be a consideration to take it, fix the road, because, I mean, it would be unfair to the...
Residents to wait.
The residents if we take it and then sit on it.
Yeah, and we can't expect someone to buy the lot and the responsibility, and we already know that doesn't work.
Well, not, they wouldn't be buying it with the responsibility of the town.
Just the lot.
Yeah, but nobody's, nobody's gonna pay top dollar for it unless the road's ready, right?
Well, they might. They pay a little less, but it'd be nice if the road was finished, right, for everybody, not just that person who would buy that lot.
Mostly for the residents that are already there.
Yep, but that would take a town meeting vote, probably, to accept the donated land, just like on the pond parcels at the last town meeting, right?
And at the same time, you'd have to have a town meeting vote to go ahead and expend the money to finish the road and probably accept the road.
And we'd have to find either a budget to take that from, whether it's the highway, well, if it's part of just recurring highway budgets, would that have to be a town meeting vote? We don't approve which specific projects they spend their money on, do they?
For the highway?
Yeah.
The highway has a budget that they operate, but, I mean, that would be a specific item that really would go to town meeting and say, you know...
Unless it came out of the highway budget.
I don't think so.
Okay.
The work would probably go out to bid, right, not be handled by the town?
The town would have to put it out to bid.
Oh, you mean the town employees doing it?
Yeah, like, there's no way that it's gonna go out to bid, and then they'll have to get a...
I would assume so, unless the highway department thought that they were able to...
Yeah, I assume they don't have the equipment to do that.
Or the manpower to designate for that. But that would be...
And then at that point, you probably need a set of plans.
We have plans.
But that show what's remaining, instead of just circling stuff. Like, you need to finish what's shown on these plans, that makes it difficult to bid, right?
Not really, I mean, the plans are there. You know, it's pretty much, you know, if they say that the base has to be redone, then it has to be redone. I mean, it's no different than the...
But I guess from that standpoint...
Private contractor gets ahold of the payment company and says, you know, "This is what we gotta do, give us a bid for that."
Yeah, they'd probably go out and look at it and determine it.
They will, they'll lock it and roll it, with a meter.
Yeah, but I guess absent having like a list of the various bullet items that they're gonna need to do, you know, reset so many catch basins, you know...
Well, we'd have that from the engineer's report.
Right, so as long as all that's consistent, he, so there's a little bit of work, but not a whole heck of a lot to get in there.
Yeah. So, at least it's a step maybe in the right direction.
Yeah, that's good. So, we'll just have that same conversation in 15 minutes again?
If Tina comes.
We have any bills? That's good. Tax rate's going down.
Do we have...
Really?
Yeah, I wish.
That'd be nice.
Do we have the letter to Aducci? Do we have any of the meeting minutes for September 19th or September 5th at night yet?
Um, I, Joe, I worked on it all, so she has everything by the next, the next... Did you find his letter?
Yeah.
Should I read it out loud?
Sure.
Anybody else on here? November 21st, from the planning board to Brian Aducci at 10 Lily Pond Lane in Halifax. I think we all know the zip code. Dear Mr. Aducci, thank you for attending the Halifax Planning Board meeting on Thursday, November 7th, 2019. You provided the planning board with information on renting space in the warehouse at Paul's Bay State Alarm at 894 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. area 233. The space will be used for your company, SOEP, S-O-E-P, painting, to store various equipment and supplies. The space will be exclusively for storage, therefore, there is no need for any signage on the building. The board is satisfied with the details of the use of the warehouse and wishes you the best of luck. If you have any concerns, please feel free to contact the planning board. Thank you. What does everybody think?
Impressed. It's a letter, it doesn't say anything. Yep, perfectly fine.
We weren't gonna put anything about the parking spaces, right? That's what I'm trying to remember in my head.
Yeah.
It said there'd only be one or two trucks there at various times, there weren't any customers, and we could go to the store and it'll just be...
Good.
Do we have to motion to accept it, or no? I forget, did we catch up on all the other meeting minutes besides the ones we still don't have?
So, read the September 25th one that you proposed some changes to last time.
Oh, yes.
I went back and reviewed the video. Sounds like everything that's in here was correct, so I don't have any changes.
Except the ones that I made, like the additions.
Yeah, whatever you changed, we should probably take a look at those and just sign up on those.
The main changes that were not changed, Amy just wrote some notes on the meeting minutes that we need to approve.
But I think those would be for us all to approve, right? So, we would have to all review and approve those?
I even edited the original one. The original one is what you're saying you thought was...
Yeah, I had no addis to that one, because at the last hearing, I thought maybe I misremembered a couple of things in there, but I reviewed the video, and it looks like I did, in fact, misremember it. It was right in the video, in the minutes.
These were the two things that I had.
Yeah, he's aware of those, that's what I...
So, these were the changes that Amy needed, but I needed to confirm them. I just haven't had a chance to get to all of them, to re-watch that.
Oh, I know, I said it.
So, this is with her, without her writing there, is what you originally had?
But this is what we... But this is what we would be approving.
Yep.
Right.
Right, I have to watch it again to make, you know.
Yep.
Just to confirm that those changes are accurate.
Are these two separate ones?
Two different meetings, two different meetings.
Oh, okay.
The 17.
I don't think I was at this one, right?
This one is the 25th.
Okay.
Okay.
We can expect those the next meeting, too?
Mm-hmm.
Do we post the meeting minutes online? Do the final official versions get posted online?
I did do the ones that were approved, that you just approved before last meeting, but um, those are online.
What's the process for that? Do you give them to somebody here internally and they upload them, or how does that all work?
Um, we can edit them from the ones that I just learned how to do it. Yeah, I just do it, I just learned how to do it recently, you know, you can do it yourself, like you have to have a password to get into it and be able to do that.
And then you upload a document.
And that's the same thing, too, with the meeting minutes? Is there like a timeline ahead of time that you post the meeting minutes online?
As soon as they're approved, I can put them online.
It's supposed to be within 30 days.
Then I can put them in.
I don't think we ever approve the meeting minute, or the minutes, or the agenda, right? I'm sorry, the agenda.
Agenda I do on Tuesday, I do that on Tuesday, it has to be done 20, um, 48 hours ahead of the meeting.
And it gets posted online?
Yep, it's usually, usually, you know, midday, it's usually on there, it has to be on, like I said, it's supposed to have to be on by 6:30 on Tuesday, that's usually the early.
Okay.
One thing about the agenda, can I get a copy of that before we post it? Just to approve it?
Um, I usually email it to you, um. Do you want to approve it?
Yeah, I mean, it, basically, it is the chairman's duty to approve the agenda before it gets posted.
I've never been asked that before. So you want to, um, so on Tuesday morning before I send it to the town, do you want me to send it to you?
Yeah, what time do you come in on?
Nine o'clock.
Okay. So probably by 10 o'clock or something?
Um, it's usually, there's a lot more stuff still going on, and I try to, you know, I edit that during the day, sometimes I take things off, add things on, so as long as it's by 6:30, but I usually have it done, right, you know, around noonish, I try to get it done, because I leave it, I leave it too.
I'm just thinking when I should be checking.
Um, I can send it to you as soon as I have the final one and I can send it, but I need to hear back because I need to, to send it to her and have it, you know, so she lets me know that it's all sent and it's been posted to my website.
Right, that's where I was getting at, so if I have it by town clock and you need to post it by 12, is that it, or?
It has to be posted by 6:30 PM.
At night?
I usually do it much earlier than that, because I leave it too, so. I try to keep it, you know, it's usually like around like noonish, so just so I can get as much in as that, you know, we're possibly doing, sometimes it's like, you know, like when I receive like the emails that people have, wanting to be able to make their appointment and all that, so, but usually.
Because I can make it a point to check my email at noon time? Tuesdays?
It's always Tuesday.
Okay.
Do we post the plans or the submissions online for any of these projects?
Much that I have, not that I have any.
Most of the plans, we don't have the digital scan marks.
Okay.
Because one of the things we, we should be looking at is getting them in digitally.
Right.
Well, I know that, um, in my minor work, I could call up Joe Webby or any other, um, engineer's office and have them send it to me in a PDF form that would be uploadable. I think that's a good idea.
I can do that, too, it's just a matter of doing, you know.
I think that's a good idea, is to have them, so the town can see them, that's a good idea.
If we did that, would that be complicated to create like a landing page for the various applications or links to the projects as they're coming in?
I mean, Caesar, Caesar would probably have to create the location, and we, we cannot upload documents to like the specifics of board pages, but as far as, I don't know about memory and I don't know how, like how it would be organized, so we could just talk to Caesar about it.
They could be just emails, okay?
Yeah, no, I'm talking about like on the web server, whatever we have for the website, maybe there's a certain file limitation size, and if we're gonna be starting to store all these documents somewhere, it's like a semi-permanent filing system on the town server, maybe there's space limitations at some point that you run up against, but it's probably all up in the cloud now anyway, right?
Yeah, it might be able to display all active, pending plans, something like that.
Yep, or recently approved, that kind of stuff, so people could see what their subdivision was if they're looking to buy one or something like that.
So that whole thing, if you make it easier, people more likely to look at it.
Yeah. If there's a plan that somebody submitted and, you know, they don't know whether or not they want to come to the hearing, and they can review what it is that's been submitted as part of the official record, maybe that makes some people come, maybe it helps some people think that it's not a big deal and they don't come.
A great, great idea.
Do you want to start early, Tina's here.
Good, um.
Tina's here?
Tina.
Tina's here.
Tina, do you want to come in? We're early, we're ready when you are, if you, if you want to get going.
That's fine. Um, can I just go back and watch, see what you guys came up with and what we came up with in the last two weeks? Do you guys hear anything from Mr. Goodman?
I got in contact with Mr. Camo, and he said he would entertain turning the lot over to the town.
Okay.
So, we have town council who started looking into things, I'm gonna get in touch with town council tomorrow and let him know that. And then maybe that can move along.
All right.
But I, but I believe what would happen is the town would end up taking it and then it would have to go to town meeting, town would have to have a vote to accept it, and then we'd have to do a vote to spend the money to fix the road and then sell the lot.
Hmm, okay. I also talked to, to council, because I do real estate, so I'm in contact with a lot of real estate lawyers all the time, and he said the town could take it from a minute on me, the town could sue him, and this particular lawyer said he's actually currently in a suit with Mike Goodman for doing this in another town.
Really?
Yeah, um, he couldn't tell me what town, but he isn't sued, so those are like the two options, he said here, the council would probably go over, but if he's willing to possibly turn it over to the town, it seems like we're going in the right direction.
Saying and doing.
No, I know, but, I mean, is there a timeframe on this, when he's gonna entertain this, if anybody's putting that together?
No matter what, it wouldn't be able to get voted on until next town meeting, so it's.
May.
It's may.
Well, it isn't that far off, I mean, if, you know, by the time you get town council and everything to put everything together, it's gonna take.
Well, I understand, and you're gonna start a project right before winter starts either, but I'm just hoping that, you know, this six months doesn't turn into another 13 years, is my fear.
Well, I think we would know before then, right, because you would have to sign the agreements that would allow us to take it to the town meeting, so you would know what direction it's heading, and then at that point, you'll know within the next couple months, and then it'll just be part of the town meeting vote, you let the, getting up people out there to support the.
We can do that.
The project, yeah.
Okay, so is there any, like, should we check back in with you guys at a particular date?
I think we're getting.
We can let you know, we can drop you a, a letter of, you know, what's going on, or you can drop in the next meeting, whatever you'd like.
Okay, I think that, um, I'm not sure I'm here for the next meeting, but maybe the following one, check in and just see how you guys are doing with that, that's okay? Is that clear?
We could give you a follow-up call, do you have her number?
I have her email.
Email?
Sure, I have her phone number, okay.
Well, we could email.
Either way, um.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine, okay. Just talking easy.
Yeah.
Awesome.
A lot better than the last time, huh?
Cool, all right, let me get you my phone number. Hopefully they get out of here, which is my problem.
Do you know if our 7:30 appointment is gonna be here?
Probably not.
So are you waiting on 7:30?
And one other.
Yeah, if our 7:00 shows up.
Oh, yeah.
Tim Frobowski, who was the, who was the man up in the planning board.
Well, that'll help. I'll be one for leaving, folks.
Thank you. And thanks for showing up, thanks for being interested.
Had to work, I just looked something up.
I know your 7:30 partner's downstairs, I think they're just waiting for somebody else.
So, even.
We can't stop them really anyhow.
Where are they?
She was waiting in the lobby.
Oh, yeah, we can't.
Tim comes in, we can do that.
Thank you guys.
Very happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, you too.
So I'm just curious, too, as far as the applicants go, I realize that like we all have a vote, but do we all vote on each particular person and then? Just one? Yeah, or like, yeah, do we all pick one applicant and that's what our vote is, or do we all have a yes or no for each applicant, and then the most yeses wins? See what I'm saying? Because it's at least three people, so do we all just pick one of the three, or do we all vote yes and no on all three? Anyone? We've never had this much interest, which is.
Yeah, the last, last time around, we basically had like one person.
I, I don't think we've ever had more than one person go for an open seat, I'm just curious if. So it's more difficult to pick like one out of the three? Is it, or would you rather say no to two people? Yeah, I don't know. No. Well, it's just strange, right, because if, if three people show up and three people are really interested, then you'd want to say yes to all three, and that doesn't help us, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Well, why hasn't she shown up?
All right, well, he gets to know that.
I'm, I am surprised that he isn't even emailed.
Maybe they forgot. The rat race world.
Good evening.
Hello.
Do we actually have to wait till 7:30?
Yeah.
Could we not just? Is there another way to do it? Because I've been to other public hearings where we essentially open it and don't necessarily open and close each hearing individually in transition from the traditional unit to the public hearing.
It's because it's on the agenda.
But a lot of towns just list them in order and don't have a specific time for each one, at least that I've seen, they open it up at a certain time and then just allow it to cascade as they go.
Well, when you continue it, you continue it to a certain time, that's wrong.
Yeah, but could we set all of them to 6:30 and then take them as they come? You know what I mean, so then the, it starts when the meeting starts, and it's just a way to keep them going.
It is a way a lot of towns, just everybody starts at 7, 6:30.
Everybody has to be there. If they get some long ones, it's.
The only time we get to meet that contemporary is if I'm in the hall.
And then we could organize them that people are continuing, that all the continuances go first, to just get them out of the way. Just a thought.
So is there any reason why they don't start, I mean, we're, we're in one test, the other two are.
Well, that was kind of where my question was coming from, we're all sitting around staring at each other for the next 10 minutes. But I think Gordon's point is that if it's advertised at 7:30 and people are planning it coming at 7:30, then we can't start early, because then they work this part of the year.
Did you, um, did you approve the one to Brian Aducci?
Yeah, he signed it.
Oh, okay.
I think we have to take a motion.
We made the motion to, to send it.
Yeah.
At the last meeting.
Is everybody on, on the applicants team, are you guys a receipt of a letter responding to questions that we got from others?
I don't, I don't. Was that to everybody or was that just the board?
I think that's just to us.
Yeah, just to the board.
Is it to the board? Town manager did provide me with the copies we walked in tonight, so I have a copy.
Okay. Okay.
And we were surprised in front of the zoning board of appeals. The board of appeals voted three to two to approve the request for modification. But one of the board members changed his opinion from his prior determinations. We required four votes, which is a super majority, which is needed for the modification of a special permit. So while we had a majority, we did not have a super majority and so the zoning board did not approve our request. The two dissenting votes had different reasons for, uh, for their opinions, but there was one commonality, which is that they believed that we needed to demonstrate that each of the proposed lots had 150 feet of frontage on Amanda's Way. You know our position with respect to that. We believe that consistent with the land court's ruling that the specific requirements of the multifamily development by lot 1671 control and not the general requirements which contain the frontage requirement, that there's no need to have frontage for a multifamily development. However, we're trying one last time to fix this before we have to resort to other remedies. So what we have done consistently, what we've been told by the zoning board is to modify our site plan once again and request modification of the site plan approval to seek approval of this plan. This plan shows four individual lots, each with 150 feet of continuous frontage on Amanda's Way, which is entirely consistent with town council's opinion, of which I received a copy as I walked into the building this night. As you know, Amanda's Way is already constructed and is a private way previously approved by the zoning board of appeals via the special permit. Again, that also has been confirmed by town council agrees that this is a private way and that it was previously authorized by the zoning board of appeals. We have the same number of units, 12. The existing units which have been constructed remain the same in the same locations. So what we now call lots one and two, and Joe's available here and he'll correct me if I'm mistaken, but lots one and two will each have two units. The remaining unconstructed units, the eight unconstructed units have been shifted and joined together so that the units on lot four, excuse me, lot two, there'll be four units on lot two and there'll be four units on lot four. We have the same density. The distance between the buildings meet the setback requirements in the multifamily development by lot. Septic system remains the same. Everything remains the same, but we have created four lots and we've shifted the buildings and connected them. We believe that this is an appropriate minor modification to present to the board. Town council's upon that there's no need to restart this process. This can be conducted via a modification. And I disagree with town council as to whether 48th section 16, the two-year bar, would apply to a modification of a site plan approval. You can't allow this to go forward if you find that in fact what's been presented to you is different than what was presented previously. I think that's obvious. We're, it's the same project, but we're relocating the buildings and re redesigning the lots to comply with what we understand, something with the zoning board of appeals is looking for. We think what is, what you're looking for and what has been actually specified by town council in town council's memo. If the planning board grants our modification for a site plan approval, we've got to go back through zoning and get zoning to modify the special permit. But since we're now proposing what was essentially requested by the two no votes for the zoning board, we would hope to receive approval. The only other issue I just want to touch upon is that there's been sort of a new issue raised with respect to the Act for Protection District. I just note that in the six years since this project has been considered, this is a new, a brand-new allegation. Having said that, the decision as to whether or not we need a special permit from the planning board for construction of the project within the, within the Act for Protection District ultimately decided by the building inspector. So if the building inspector tells us that we need a special permit, we'll have to come to you for a special permit for septic systems, which have already been approved by the Board of Health. We'll come to you for that special permit. But this is an unrelated issue to this because your site plan approval is already contingent upon us receiving all of our other permits. So if we need a special permit from the planning board to locate these septic systems within our Act for Protection District, we'll come back to you and do that. As I said, it's separate and distinct from the issues before you. So we're doing our very best to try and get this thing through and we're requesting that this board please modify site plan approval with the plan. And Joe, I don't know if I stole any of your thunder, but if there's anything you can add with respect to the plan. No, I think we...
Would you actually just mind walking through from the beginning? Because that wasn't part of the original approval of the plan in the very beginning. Just if you could just walk through the basics of the grading, the stormwater, the septic, just so that we're all up to date on the information.
The, well, we applied, and I don't know the dates, it's been a while, but we applied for a special permit, excuse me, for a site plan approval for the roadway to be called Amanda's Way. At that time, it was reviewed under, by this board with Merrill. Merrill has approved the stormwater management that we have. Basically, we came out of this with an approval. I think you know that. Originally, we had, we were asked to put lot lines on there and specifically we were told, my remembrance is, is that we did not have to meet the 150 feet of frontage because it wasn't required. And then this thing took off on a life of its own. But these pink lines were the original five lots. And what we've done now is we, these buildings are constructed on these two lots and we've combined these others to make them quadruplexes so that now we have four lots that each have 150 feet of frontage. The superstructure of the roadway and the drainage is all the same. We can handle the septic systems exactly the same. I don't know if that answers your question.
Where are you putting the septic systems? Is it between the buildings and streets?
We have areas for the septic systems here, 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 and here. These two are already actually installed.
Okay.
We have, we had to meet part of the requirements through the processes. You know, the two hundred foot grid, we had to perk and eighty percent of them had to pass percolation tests with the Board of Health and we've gone through all that. We have adequate soils up here to build septics.
Did the, when that duplexes got joined to make the quadruplex, did you modify the septic system to account for the fact...
Not yet because we, you know, baby steps. We're here first.
Okay. Is that the intent to essentially just have one system for each lot? I guess each cluster of units?
That, that's exactly right. Would be to have, Halifax requires that we have separate septic tanks for each unit. But we can have one bleaching field.
So you have a tank at each point?
Each unit has to have its own septic tank, yes.
Okay. Are the lots themselves otherwise compliant with all the upland requirements, the shape factors, all the rest of the traditional zoning?
I can't answer that question. I'm still unsure why we're calling these lots or dimensional lots.
What are, what are we calling?
We still have, well, I'll leave that up to the attorneys, but we still want to have a condominium association for the whole parcel. And I don't want to speak out of turn, but it's my understanding that these two units are not going to hold that long.
Right. Or some entity, it'll be the same entity that owns each one of these lots and that'll be the condo association.
Right, yeah, that'd be. So I don't know why we would have to have the shape requirements in circles. Each of the lots meets the minimum lot area dimension and the lot frontage requirement as spelled out in town council's memo, which are the requirements for multifamily. With respect to the condominium, we're gonna have to work with the conveyancing lawyers because this has already been set up as a condominium. There are already condominium plans of record at the registry. We will have to adjust all of that to accommodate this. We're simply trying to get through the town approval process for this plan and then after that, we will have to do everything else that will need to be done in order to complete the permitting for this project.
We appreciate that. I think we just want to know exactly what it is that's being proposed, right? Because I imagine these lots will be, the intent is to have them identified as separate assessors lots the way at least it sounds.
We have to consult with the assessor because it's intended to be owned by one entity. So we'll consult with the town assessors as to how they want to handle this because this is now being treated differently than other similar projects in the town.
Okay. And then for clarification, then on the lot or what's being called Amanda's Way, not having the benefit of being part of the original approval, was that identified as a private way in the past on its own? That whole parcel is a private way? Or what was the distinction on the creation of that? Would we consider it a drive, an internal site drive, really?
No, the town council's confirmed that in fact it is a private way that was approved by the zoning board of appeals, a special permit process for multifamily development.
So the Board of Appeals approved it as a permit way?
That's correct. That's always been our position. That's town council's position. That's correct.
So then that in itself would have to be its own lot then, right? If it's a way separate and distinct from the other lots in some fashion, I imagine?
No, because it's a private way. The fee in the way would be, I guess, the fee in the way would be the center line of the way, which would be owned by the property owners on either side of the way. As you can appreciate, you know, these are all interesting questions really relating to conveyancing, condominium, the tax status of the property. And we're gonna have to work our way through that, but they're unrelated to planning board considerations.
I think they're related in the matter that the town council identifies that the lots, whether they're legal assessors lots or whatever, they may be, need to have that 150 feet of frontage on a public or private way. Right, so if we're identifying this...
Each of the lots reflected on the site plan, which will be recorded at the register, shows the requisite minimum continuous frontage, 150 feet on Amanda's Way, which has been ruled by town council to be a private way, but this has not been accepted by the... And I should note that the town council also said that there's no, there's no reason for any subdivision approval of that because again, this was created in connection with a special permit for the multifamily development. I presume, and again, I'm not a conveyancing lawyer, but I presume that, you know, each of the lots, and I don't know whether we need to perform the deed to reflect that this is all, concerns title standards and title insurance and things beyond me. But, but we're gonna have to, I presume that if we're gonna have a condominium association, that the condominium association is ultimately going to be the owner of the lots as well as, as well as the private way. It's atypical for a condominium association to own more than one lot, but again, that's a conveyancing issue and a financing issue because that's another here that again, that's beyond the purview of this, this board. We're gonna have to work our way through the business issues to accommodate that. But the intention would be for the condominium association to own the common areas, which include all of the lots, and then the unit owners would own each of the units as originally intended.
Okay, and I appreciate that. I'm just trying to understand exactly how we're documenting and recording the frontage on, you know, what we're calling the way, right? So the common area parcel, so the larger parcel that are regularly shaped one that contains the actual roadway and some drainage infrastructure, that includes the way, right? How do you measure frontage along a way if we're not saying that parcel in itself is the way?
So that, well, that parcel is not a buildable parcel, so I guess under this construct is not a lot. So that parcel doesn't necessarily need to have frontage on the way. Only the lots on which the units are located would need to have... Only the lots on which the units are located would need to have 150 feet of continuous frontage on the roadway. I don't know what the frontage is on the unbuiltable lot, Joe. I assume it's more than 150 feet, but I'm just saying.
I'm not sure. Are you talking about the drainage areas?
I think we're conflating like two different, two different things, right? So one, one good point is that along Elm Street, there's less than 150 feet of frontage that a multifamily development would require at the beginning. So that...
Correct. The frontage, the frontage for this multifamily development, you know, the required frontage for the multifamily development is on Amanda's Way, which is a private way. Again, the multifamily development bylaw in 167-12, and consistent with 167-7, which has been discussed, indicates that you can have, you can have frontage on either a public or a private way. It's right in 167-7.
So then the problem is, right, so if we're saying the frontage for the development is on Amanda's Way, then I don't think those four total lots, those lots there are 10 acres in size, right? The 10 acre parcel has frontage on Elm Street, right?
So you think that each, each of the lots now needs to be greater than 10 acres?
No, I think the development as a whole needed to have 150 feet of frontage prior to development. That's my understanding.
That's not, that's not, again, I'm, we're trying to conform to what we've been asked by the Zoning Board and Town Council. The multifamily development is defined as a development of three or more dwelling units on a single lot of land under one ownership of not less than 10 acres in size. That's, that's the basic definition of multifamily development. It's in 167, this is the problematic statute, it doesn't jive with something else, but we're trying to make a judge, is required that a multifamily development complex proposed here and to locate each building on individual lot, which will have continuous frontage on a public or private way. We've always read that differently, and, and so we're now trying to conform to how the town now wants us to address that. So that requires that we're to locate, locate each building on an individual lot, which will have a continuous frontage on a public or private way, which is what we...
I agree that that's where we are today. It's my, my question is that, I guess my question back to you is, is your position that a multifamily development is not required to provide 100 feet, 50 feet of frontage prior to any of the lot manipulations?
Correct.
Okay. I think there was an interpretation that our Town Council had that was different, that her position was that the development should have, based on the hearing that we had down in the select, it isn't in that letter, it was in the meeting that we had down in the selectmen's hearing, how many months ago.
I don't think that, that's, it's not my recollection. I don't know which you're specifically referring to. I mean, everything that was proposed is entirely consistent with your new Land Use Council's opinion as to how this is going to be done. As you can appreciate, doing it this way creates other complications for the developer. I've alluded to some of that. So we'll work through those issues, but again, those issues are not relevant to what we're proposing here. And we're trying to avoid all of those other consequences, obviously, but we've been unsuccessful in doing that.
Do you have the documentation that is from zoning that allows this road to be a private way?
Town Council has reviewed the prior...
Do you have the document?
Special permit. Would you like a copy of the special permit?
That states that's a road?
Yeah, so, so you have in your record a copy of this special permit, which was reviewed by Town Council, and Town Council has opined that the road was approved as a multifamily development private way by the Zoning Board of Appeals through the special permit process.
So it went through subdivision control, then?
And Town Council has reviewed that this does not require subdivision control. That was Town Council.
To create a road, or to subdivide lots?
You're mistaken this truth, and I'm relying on my home lawyer.
You have to do subdivision control, and in our subdivision control, it says number seven, private streets are prohibited, but existing private streets will be approved only if they meet public street standards.
So your Town Council, your own lawyer, has advised you that this private way does not need subdivision approval?
It's a Form A lot, then?
Excuse me?
It's a Form A?
No, it does not require any subdivision approval.
How do you create a street without subdivision?
You do it by special permit under your multifamily development bylaw, as, as your Town Council have advised you.
Carlos, the public is asking to speak.
Well, are you, do you have any other questions?
No, my question to you, I guess, is, just bruising this quickly, where in the letter do they identify that the zoning board approved the private way? Very well, I missed it.
I didn't see it. I brought it today. I wouldn't have used it based on this.
It does mention here with, are proposed on a way which was approved by the private site plan approval and currently exists on the ground. So site plan approval would be our site plan approval, right? As opposed to a special permit?
Then I must have misspoken. I had a minute to look at what Town Council submitted.
Okay.
I would, I would argue that, in fact, given the fact that the special permit, the special permit granting authority for a multifamily development, similar to any flexible open space, would be the entity that, that would authorize the development road.
Okay.
However, Council, Town Council, as we've said...
I'm, I'm asking the question mainly just because we, as a rule, typically have not approved or allowed private ways.
Correct. The problem is with your multifamily development bylaw, and I read you the section that says that a multifamily development complex can be on either, either a public or a private way. This is a special creation of your multifamily development bylaw, and it's different than a subdivision, different than definitive subdivision, and, you know, different than a single family house lot.
Yep. I, I agree that this, my, or my position would be that this plan, if the way did exist as a private way, that the lots would meet the requirements and the development would meet the requirements from a zoning standpoint. I think the thing that I'm having trouble with is just the creation of the private way and whether or not that's been done. I appreciate that through the previous site plan review, there was a plan that was approved, but whether or not that's the mechanism by which it gets created?
I think, I think on, in this particular case, because it was approved by us and the zoning board and fully permitted, that that is, that is the, you know, that was the approval that they needed to create the private way.
And I just want to correct myself. In fact, I was correct. Town Council said the roadway was approved in the original site plan approval and special permit, and I've been informed that it had, that it was constructed on...
Number four?
This is second, the answer to number four. So in fact, I was correct. The last sentence in Town Council's answer to question number four.
Yeah, so that's kind of what I was saying, like it has been approved by both of us, and I think that's where the creation took place. So I think as of right now, that private way is created, whether they modify or reconfigure anything on the outside and anything in the lots, I believe the private way already exists.
So would you take that oddly shaped parcel, the entire parcel, to be the, the way? I understand there's a road, that's actually a road that's there, right? But I'd define the extent of the private way.
If Joe could flip, flip the page, I think that there is a way to define on the plan the actual way.
It's labeled Amanda's Way with the, I'm just, and you've got...
No, I appreciate that. Just, we're, we want to confirm how the frontage is measured on these lots that are created. There's a point that's being used, which is the, the frontage of the lots, and at some point, instead of like a traditional subdivision roadway, which would be a private way or a public way, we have a parcel which essentially contains Amanda's Way.
Correct. And the frontage is delineated by bounds and measured with these points on the plan.
So I guess, I see what you're saying, where it's technically that whole thing is the way, but all that would do, would actually give them more frontage on lot number four if we were to consider that entire parcel.
And again, I, it was not our expectation that you would consider the entire parcel of land on which the way is located to be part of the way. The layout of the way is shown on the plan.
Yeah, that's why, I think there are things that show the, the roundings and...
I think there's a distinction between a road and a public or private right of way.
I know what you're saying, but it exists as one entity as of now. It's all...
Yeah, it's, it's a parcel that includes a roadway.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Maybe, in my mind, if we took this line out and this line out and made this all one lot to here and this lot four to here, is that kind of what you're thinking?
I think that would be more in line with a traditional way being created.
Yeah, okay. That's, feel simple, if that's, if we, I mean, we, like Adam was saying, we would just have more frontage with lot one and more frontage with lot four.
Again, under ordinarily, under ordinary circumstances, I, we, I think we'd be inclined to do a plan change. I need to get an approval tonight, either an approval or denial tonight. So, because we're, we're reporting to the land court.
Okay.
And we have a yet another deadline, a short deadline, in order to report back to the land court. So I guess it could be, an approval could be conditioned upon the plan being revised in accordance with the instructions, but I just want to be upfront that, because I still have to go back to the zoning board. I need a fair amount to get that done within the timeframe provided to me by the board.
Okay.
Hi, anybody from the audience?
Good neighbors. So for the last two-plus years, this has been in court, the town and the developer have said that that's a driveway, that there's no frontage off of that way. So to hear that the town is now saying, yet, this is a different attorney for the town, because Attorney Huxson said originally, the only way to create the road is through subdivision control, and the only way to create frontage on the way would be through subdivision control. So yet, this is a new attorney telling us that the whole time that this was a private way, that doesn't make any sense. We've just spent the last two years in court over this project, and the whole time they called Amanda's Way a driveway. They never said there was frontage off the other lots. The whole time, they said that there, in fact, there weren't any lots. Those were just, you know, they were lots. There was no frontage necessary. So to see this plan, it makes absolutely no sense. A lot is defined in our bylaws as one thing. It's not, there's no definition difference for multifamily developments. It's a lot and calls out a lot. There's no difference definition for multifamily development. The only way to create a private way is by laying out the road before subdivision control. The selectmen had to do that before subdivision control was in effect.
I'd have to look at it and say that the subdivision control does not fall under the multifamily development, and as far as the frontage goes, as far as I understand, we're actually here tonight to, to do that.
So I'd also make the note that Town Council, representing the Zoning Board of Appeals in the litigation, her opinion was consistent with our opinion, and in fact, we have the same presentation from the land court. I can't speak to what Mr. Huxson said or didn't say, I was not involved.
You were there, Mr. Brodsky, you were at the meeting?
Just, just to clarify, what is your position? Let's hold on for a second. What is your position, I guess, on the, the point of the private way or the frontage there? And how is it different from what Mr. Andrews is stating?
So, so Mr. Andrews would like us to comply with subdivision control and create...
November 20th, that a private way has been created and currently exists at the property.
Just to point out, the whole court case, this, this was said that that was a driveway, and there were no lots there. So this is a complete flip by the town and the developer to say that this is a private way and it's creating frontage.
The last subdivision lots, as I said, that's never been our position. In fact, we're not proposing that this be created by subdivision control. That position, again, I, I did attend, if it's, two meetings several years ago with Mr. Huxson. I don't recall what Mr. Huxson's position was with respect to subdivision control. He was advocating for lots with, with frontage, but I can, I can tell you that King Salon, Town Council representative with the Zoning Board of Appeals, doesn't believe that we need to create lots and that there's no frontage requirement. And this vessel, your current land use, the Town Council has an opinion somewhere in between. We're just trying to comply with what we're presently being told would be acceptable to the town in order to get this done. So our, our position is, to this day, we don't need lots, we don't need subdivision control, it's entirely consistent with the multifamily development, but we need to get this project moving forward, otherwise my clients face bankruptcy. And that's not in anyone's interest, it's not in my client's interest, it's not in the town's interest. I don't think it's in Mr. Andrews' interest to have a half-built project next door to him, but I'm not to speak for, for his interests. So that's what we're trying to avoid.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Andrews?
The Town Attorney, Mr. Huxson, my attorney, Mr. Brodsky, advised the party trust in July and August of 17 to stop building. Mr. Brodsky said it was a business determination to continue building. It was a business decision. They continued building. It's on them if they go bankrupt. It's their problem.
The road had already been constructed by...
Because of Mr. Andrews' minute.
So they require lots. There's only one definitional lot, and the only way to create lots is through subdivision control. Amanda's Way doesn't exist. It's, it's not a private way. It hasn't been approved. There's only three ways to approve it, and hasn't, and hasn't been approved. My attorney's not available to be here tonight, and I haven't been given a copy of the attorney's decision. So to say that they don't need subdivision control to create lots is totally opposite of what happened in the land court. The land court judge saw the plans, said you drew solid lines, you called them lots, you're required to make lots.
That's not what Judge Vey said.
Just to contradict, as far as the roadway, the roadway was approved through us and the zoning board. So there is no, I don't want there to be any question on that part.
Right.
Like, you know what I mean? It's an approved road.
The pavement, the curbs and everything, the, the roadway, the driveway, whatever we're calling it, was approved. The design, the overall project design was approved. I think we're here going over the nuances of the zoning ordinance and the confusing wording of lots and frontage and all that.
As of right now, like the applicant has satisfied every board, and as far as I'm concerned, has done everything that they've been asked, you know, as far as...
What was the reason the zoning board denied you? Did you say that it was because of frontage?
You can read their decision. I can't make heads or tails. I can't reconcile the position of at least one of the members who voted no, so I'm, I guess I can read the decision.
This was that you went to the zoning board to seek modification to the existing special permit by deleting reference to the prior plan.
Correct.
Set dated April 17, 2015, which showed individual lot lines, and adopt the September 18, 2019, where the site plans would show no lot lines. So you were looking to waive your lot lines, which is what I believe you said to me in a planning board meeting on September 5, 2019, is that you were looking to waive your lot lines.
Yes.
So it wasn't that zoning denied you on frontage, it was that you needed lot lines.
As I explained, you can read the ZVA's decision, there were two no...
It's right here what you went for.
No, you can read, if I might finish. You can read the ZVA's decision, and you'll see that there are two no votes who have different reasons. I think the only thing I could divine from that in common... I think the only thing I could divine from that in common, that they were struggling with 150 feet of frontage. So we've gone forward to redesign the plan to address what, as best I can tell, was the major obstacle. We have to go back to the zoning board of appeals if you grant the modification, and they're gonna have to review this. And I imagine if they have any other concerns, we may have to address those concerns, but I believe that this was the principle. And I also wanted to spell the myth that somehow we kept on building everything be damned. At the time of the appeals of the building permits, the road had already been installed, the buildings had been started, I believe they had been framed. We needed to close the buildings so they wouldn't rot away. So the additional work that was done after that was simply to make the buildings weather-tight so that their investment was not lost any further. And there's been no work done in a year and a half, year, year and a half. And obviously, historically high market that they're now missing as a result of this.
Okay. Mr. Andrews?
The way needs to be constructed under statute. A site plan is not part of any statute. A way needs to be conducted, constructed under a statute of Massachusetts general law. The site plan is not part of any statute. It's some, it's an animal created by the town, so there is no statute that's allowed this to be created. It needs to be created by chapter 82, section 21. It needs to be created by the board of selectmen before subdivision control went through. You can't have a private way created after subdivision control has gone through.
That's not true.
Do you have conflicting information from our town council that appears to indicate evidence?
I would request a copy of the council's decision to be given to me so I can give it to a copy to my attorney, so she can review it.
Joanne, do we have an extra copy of the letter from the town council?
The questions?
Well, Charlie just gave it to Brodsky on the way in, so maybe he has one for you.
So I could even, I can read it into the record. I'm gonna read the whole thing. But ultimately, the first question is, does the party trust need to restart the site plan review process? Ultimately, the answer is generally no. They can continue, as often divisions are part of the process, so that could just be part of the ongoing process. Second question is starting with the premise that there are lots in the multifamily development. What are the requirement for the minimum size for each lot and the minimum frontage on each lot? Her answer is Amanda's Estates proposed in the AR zoning district, and according to section 167-11, the table of dimension density regulations, each lot requires 40,000 square feet and 150 feet of frontage, which this project does provide. If lots are being created for whatever purpose, in my opinion, they should meet those requirements. In addition, the table in section 167-11 contains the following note. Schedule of Density Regulations, as it applies to construction of new dwelling house and residential zones, shall apply to a new dwelling house built in any zone other than residential in no case shall multifamily, multiple dwelling, multiple family dwelling be constructed on any lot having an area less than 40,000 square feet. Therefore, as the applicant appears to be proposing multifamily dwellings, as a multifamily dwelling is defined, with definition, each lot must be at least 40,000 square feet in size. These lots are all 40,000 square feet in size that contain the buildings, correct?
Yes.
Yep. Third question, for whatever frontage is required, does the frontage have to be on a public way, a private way, or some other similar way? And does the way shown on the layout, shown on the plan, qualify in this regard? The reply is, as you know, the zoning bylaw use chart refers to, quote, multifamily dwellings or apartments, see section 167-72. Section 167-72A states, it is required that any multiple multifamily development complex proposed here under shall locate each building on an individual lot, which shall have continuous frontage on a public or private way, end quote. I've been informed that the proposed modification to the approved site plan is proposing three or four lots, each with a multifamily dwelling on it, and are proposing each lot on a way which was approved by the prior site plan approval and currently exists on the ground. I did not find a definition in chapter 167 of a public way or a private way. However, since the way has not been accepted by town meeting as a public way, in my opinion, it would be classified as a private way. Four, if the land for Amanda's Estates will need to be divided by lot lines and the lots will be required to have minimum square footage and minimum frontage, does the development as a whole have to be considered a subdivision and meet the stipulations of the state subdivision control law, chapter 41, sections 81K through 81G, and the town subdivision of land regulations, chapter 235? The zoning bylaw, section 167-7, does not refer to the subdivision control law or the town of Halifax subdivision of land, chapter 235. Therefore, it appears that the drafters of section 167-7 did not intend for the subdivision control law to apply. Further, the roadway was approved in the original site plan approval and special permit, and I have been informed that it is constructed, and it is not part of the modification request for the planning board. As a point of clarification, has the parcel containing the road changed in any way as part of this application?
The total part, the...
The parcel that contains the road.
No, no, that is not...
That's exactly it.
That math is awesome.
Okay. Did I skip one?
No.
Five, can this be considered to be a multifamily development as one or more of the structures will have fewer than three units? The definition of multifamily development states, a development of three or more dwelling units on a single lot of land under one ownership of not less than 10 acres in size. It is my understanding that Amanda's Estates started as a development on one lot of land over 10 acres. Subsequently, in order to move the project forward and attempt to comply with 167-7D2A, which in my opinion conflicts with the definition and requires each building to be located on an individual lot, the current modification is seeking to place each building on an individual lot. Further, section 167-7D2B states that, quote, "The complete parcel must be under the ownership of the developer before a special permit is granted," end quote, which is the case here. Therefore, in my opinion, the proposed modification can be considered a multifamily development. Just to clarify, this is all under one ownership right now?
Right.
And no lots have been, it's just one parcel?
Correct.
Till today, it seems. Number six, Amanda's Estates is located in Aquifer and Well Protection District Zone 2. Can this site plan be approved under chapter 167-28, given that there may be uses in connection with septic systems that are restricted under 167-17? Or is the matter of whether the uses are allowed a separate issue to be dealt with through applications by the party trust for any necessary permits? In my opinion, the site plan review cannot be denied based upon the lack of a required special permit. I do not have septic plants, I'm unaware of any compliance with 167-17 or lack thereof. I do note that enforcement of the zoning bylaws conferred upon the building inspector pursuant to section 167-18, and therefore, in my opinion, it's the building inspector who determines if special permits are necessary for the proposed septic systems. And any variances for the septic systems would be granted by Board of Health, right? Do you anticipate there would be a need for any sort of variances for septic systems?
I think the only confusing thing, I think somebody brought it up, is the, and I don't know the exact zoning section, but the act of due...
Yep. Does it relate to the septic systems?
I don't need those for the septic.
That's good.
It says in the zoning bylaw that you can't have more than 1,500 gallons dispersal on any lot. And it says that the use is prohibited, so only single-family homes would be allowed to do the same.
Again, that's an issue for the building inspector, the Board of Health, and every special permit will come back.
It's actually, you can't get a special permit because the use is prohibited, so you can't issue a special permit for that. It's a prohibited use, so you can't issue that.
We didn't issue that permit anyway, so...
Actually, we do. Special permit in 167-17, the special permit granting authority shall be the planning board.
So if I might begin to note that this project is first presented in 2014. Six years later, we have an allegation that we require some additional authorization that had not been previously required by any of the planning board, the zoning board, the building inspector, or the Board of Health. If we need additional authorization, we'll go through the step to get additional authorization. I don't need that requirement that Mr. Andrews says in the schedule of uses. At most, we require a special permit to deal with individual sewage disposal systems that are designed, according to the town Halifax Board of Health rules, under use number 16, which is a special permit use.
So they're saying it's a multifamily development use, that's the use. So it's not permissible, it's prohibited. And the reason why that I brought this up now is because when they came forward with the new plan where they removed the lot lines, then it would be all on one lot.
But now they're all on separate lots.
But they're not subdividing the lots, so they're not lots.
All right, and another thing, just sort of can clarify, we have a definition of a lot being a single area of land in one ownership defined by meets and bounds or boundary lines in a recorded deed or recorded plan. Going back to every time that we've dealt with one of these, and whether or not the lot lines are required, and whether or not you can show lot lines on a plan and record it that doesn't create it or call it a buildable lot, it is now just a single area of land defined by meets and bounds. I believe in this case, that's all we're doing. We are signifying a piece of land with meets and bounds and putting it on a plan. That's creating the lot by definition out of our book. So the idea that every lot, or whichever lot we're trying to create, has to be under subdivision control, which obviously it's not in this, is crazy. Like, we can still create, or you can still have a single area of land defined by meets and bounds, and I believe that's what's reflected here.
I'm gonna guess that any of the individual units is not going to generate more than 1,500 gallons per day of septic. No, that's over. So, I mean, it's a nonsensical reading of the bylaw.
How many bedrooms are proposed in...
Three bedroom units.
So even the four-unit buildings, you're gonna have 12 bedrooms, which is, what, 1,300 gallons, or 12 too, something like that? So if you take that interpretation, is that, I guess...
Less than 15.
Your position that that would apply to this particular section of site?
I don't think that that would apply. I was just assuming that Mr. Andrews is correct, each of the units would comply with those requirements. What he would like to do is he'd like to group all of the units together as one large residential unit to try and create a design flow that was greater than 1,500, which I don't think was the intent, because you never could have had a multifamily development if that was the case.
Do we know that this is for a fact in the zone 2?
Yes, we are in zone 2. So again, there are issues here that we'll work through with the town, but I don't think that that's what Mr. Andrews says.
But it does seem that the planning board's special granting authority here, and...
Yes, the planning board is the special granting authority for a special permit for any special permit used within the Act for Protection District. So if the building commissioner tells us that we need this, we will be coming back to this court for that, separate and distinct from what we're presenting tonight.
Except, the only problem with that is it says it's expressly not allowed.
Well, how do you reconcile number 16, which talks about septic systems approved by the Board of Health?
Well, currently, out there are not, aren't there some that aren't approved?
We have, they're all approved. We have two constructed.
And this was previously approved by the Board of Health?
Correct, but they were shown as being on separate lots.
And they are again.
But they're not, actually, the whole reason why we went to court in the first place is because the plan shows lots and they're not creating them. So we're gonna be right back in there if you guys approve this again. They're creating lots.
Which is fine, we're more than happy to be in the front of the line.
And I think part of...
Also, if it was approved under one lot, then it didn't exceed what was called a...
Which is why I didn't bring it up before.
Okay.
But if they're not gonna create the lots, then it applies.
But they are creating lots. Is this plan not very similar to the previous one in that...
There's only two ways to create lots in Massachusetts, through subdivision control...
We're back on the same arguments over and over again.
Because it is the same argument. You can't, you can't do this without subdivision control.
Right, so again, you have the opinion of town council and my opinion for whatever it's worth. And I should note that there's nothing in the land court judge's decision that says that subdivision control applies, but the judge basically said was that attached to your site plan approval was a plan showing lots, and that was inconsistent with the plans of review for purposes of building progress.
And just for clarification, the original package in the approved set of plans that went through planning as well as zoning did show lots, but the lots just didn't have the required frontage. Is that the difference that we have here, basically?
That's the issue today, that's correct. That's the issue today.
Mr. Andrews?
That was not what was said at land court by the town or by the developer. They said that it was always on one lot.
Correct.
And now we have...
Correct, we, our position...
Our position did not prevail in the land court on that issue. So, if it has to be on separate lots, again, we're back to the same issue. They needed to go through subdivision control or get A and Rs, and you can't get an A and R on a private way.
I think as a board, we should agree that subdivision control does not apply to multifamily development. I think as a board, we have to understand that or agree to that. All right? I mean, that's pretty clear.
I disagree with you.
That's cut and dry, right? That subdivision control does not apply to a multifamily development? I think that's one of the few things that we have that's black and white.
That's actually not true, because the reason that subdivision control went in is actual, actually after Twin Lakes and Lyden Lane went through, and those are the reasons to...
Yeah, but I mean, that's...
It's exactly why it happened.
But to say, like, for you to assume what the intention was is not the same as just reading it out of the book.
I'm not assuming my mother was actually gearing me on the history of it, because she was around during the whole entire thing, as was your dad.
But that is not what they voted on.
Your dad taught me this.
That's great, but that's not what the book says.
Halifax Trails has a private way, multifamily development with a private way that was not approved by subdivision control.
Are those private ways, or are they just driveways? I don't think they have separate lots and that, so...
Well, that's because this board...
I don't know what a way is, that's the problem.
This board waived that requirement for Halifax Trails, which is where we began this process.
We've already been determined to find out that we do not have, the zoning or the planning does not have the right to waive anything that is detrimental to our residents, and that we didn't have the right.
That's not, the town council told you that...
I read it.
...it didn't have authority under your zoning bylaws to waive it, it has nothing to do with whether it's a detriment to anyone, that's not...
No, that's actually the definition of whether or not you can actually waive something. As a zoning board member or a planning member, you have to consider your town residents and whether or not it is detrimental to them. I will read it.
The planning board may waive specific requirements, town council...
No permit shall be granted for any commercial, industrial, business, institutional, apartment, multi-dwelling, municipal, or school building, or public utility structure, and none of the above classes of structures shall be constructed or externally enlarged, and no such use shall be expanded or established in any existing building or lot not thereto for, used for such purposes except in the conformity with the site plan bearing an endorsement of approval by the planning board. Said site plan shall show the owner of racket, location, zone boundary lines, easements, or other legal restrictions, exact location of the buildings on the lot with side, front, and rear dimensions, lot dimensions, topography, adjacent public waves, location off-street, parking, lighting, utility systems, surface drainage, traffic flow, location and nature of open spaces with specific notations as to landscaping, locusts plan and other details deemed necessary by the planning board. The planning board may waive or substantially reduce the site plan submission requirements for projects having limited or minor impact... for projects having limited or minor impacts consistent with the purpose of the chapter. Limited and... Minor impacts.
So you misunderstand what that says.
No, I don't.
Can I finish, please? So town council said that you don't have to re...
Finish the thought here first.
Also, when you... Let me get to the point here. Where was it that I had this? Give me one second. Variances. This is under 167-21, three variances. So this is to do with zoning and what they can waive.
Which is different than what we're talking about.
But it isn't, because it's all like what we can and can't...
You misunderstand, Ms. Trup.
No, I really don't.
So a variance is a specific different zoning requirement. The waiver provision, as you remember, your town council said you don't reach the standard whether or not you can grant a waiver. She said that you can't use a waiver to waive a requirement of the zoning bylaws. You don't even get to the standard for concern a waiver, because you didn't have the legal authority to do so, and that was her opinion.
Right. Our authority to waive things are parts of the submission materials to be submitted, traffic reports, stormwater reports, and howls, these things like that. And I think the variance part of it, right? It's related to what the Board of Appeals, they allow for variances from the dimensional requirements of the various aspects of the zoning.
Right, but all of it has to take into consideration the detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the chapter. The Board of Appeals may impose limitations of both time and use, and a continuation of permitted use may be conditioned upon compliance with regulations to be made and amended from the time. No permit or variance which has been unfavorable... That's... It says up here, literal enforcement of the provisions of the chapter would involve substantial hardship, financial, or otherwise to the appealing.
And those are variances and standards that the zoning board of appeals has to adhere to as it relates to their consideration of requests to vary from the zoning code. And they have certain thresholds that they need to meet to be able to grant those variances, hardships.
Those thresholds established by chapter 48, section 10 or 11, the chemical...
The point is, is that we have to think of the people that we work for, and that's the town.
Well, I would think that our position is to interpret...
We do.
The plans that get submitted and compare those plans against the zoning ordinance and the rules and regulations in there and determine whether or not the site plans that are submitted meet the requirements of the submission. But what we base our decision on should be based on what's in the zoning code more so than, you know, any personal feelings or overarching goal of what we think the town should be. Our job is to interpret the zoning ordinance and confirm whether... Or not interpret the zoning ordinance, but review the site plans and advise on whether or not we feel that they conform to the requirements or if they don't. And if they don't, we need to cite specific reasons why they don't. So I think that's where we are here. We're evaluating the plan that's in front of us today, and it sounds like the issues that we need to determine are, is Amanda's Way a private way? Does it exist already as a private way? From what I've seen, our town council is of the opinion that it does exist as a private way. I don't know if anybody has any differing opinions from that.
How does a street get made without subdivision control?
So that's how you make a public way, through the subdivision control process. And unfortunately, I don't have the subdivision regulations in front of us, but I don't know the nuances of the creation of a private way. But I can rely on right now is the determination from our zoning council that identifies that it was created. So what Ms. Trup is pointing out is a section of the zoning code of section 235-21. Section A, actually section B subsection seven, which identifies that, quote... So this is a section of streets, street classifications and widths. Section B is location. Subsection seven is that private streets are prohibited, but existing private streets will be approved only if they meet public street standards. So that would imply, again, I don't know if there's nuance in the language there as it relates to private streets versus private ways. I don't know if they're considered the same.
So again, the town council said that your subdivision regs don't apply, but the definition of street away, this purpose of subdivision is a road open and dedicated to public use. It goes on and on. But again, we're sort of getting into an area where it's not implicated here.
In section 235, is that subdivision control?
That is subdivision control.
That's our site plan.
It's subdivision control.
Okay. So for clarification, does this driveway meet the standards of what would be a public way in terms of roadway geometry, alignment, drainage standards, widths?
Well, I don't think I can... I don't think that I could through my right now state all that. But I could say that certainly was approved by this board. It was reviewed by Merrill and Gary. It was approved. It was inspected as it was constructed, and it was all signed off, as I believe. The purpose... We're losing the... The purpose of all of the regulations are to create safe accessways, and there's no suggestion that anything that's been approved or constructed or is some way safety hazard or deficient in any respect. So I just... We're losing sight of the forest and the trees on this one.
Mr. Andrews?
As a private citizen, the roadway that's laid out is illusionary. There is no meets bounds. It's not laid out, so you're creating frontage on something that's not there.
And that's somewhat of what I'm struggling with in that there is a road there. It's identified as a way, and it has all the makings of what would be a road, street signs and all that at the intersection with Elm Street. But there is no associated definition of that way other than the fact that there's a road there.
I just want to note for the record, because this is recorded, that Mr. Andrews, who just spoke, is the chairman of the planning board, who has accused himself of this matter and is now participating.
As a private citizen.
Noted.
So as far as that holdup, I think the... Reading what we got back from council, I think that kind of clarified that for me.
In which direction?
As far as it does exist as a private way. I think it's actually kind of stated twice in the answer for both three and four. I mean, it was built because it was approved and permitted. So, I mean, how does it get more official than that? Right? No, wait. It could. It could get more official than that. But as far as where we sit right now, that road is there and exists because it was permitted and approved.
Right. And I completely agree. The road is there, and for all intents and purposes, it meets the intent of serving the needs of the potential residents. The thing that I struggled with is, you know, what differentiates this from a driveway? And what makes it a private way versus a private...
I think part of it would be because it's also going to be owned and maintained by the condo association.
But just as any single family homeowner would own a driveway, a commercial developer would own the pavement in front of their development, that doesn't make that a private way necessarily.
All right. I was just thinking as far as like maintenance, like there's an entity to care for. But I see what you're saying.
So as town council says that you're lacking definitions in your zoning bylaw, the term "way" is generally recognized as a means of access to get somewhere. There are two kinds of ways. There are public ways and there are private ways. Public ways are those that are adopted by the town to become public ways and meet those specific standards. Everything else that provides access is a way. Your multifamily bylaw, which we were asked to comply with, requires that we show 150 feet of continuous... These buildings on a lot with continuous frontage on a public or private way. I don't know what more we can say other than that is what your bylaw requires. We've been told that's what your bylaw requires.
Yep.
That's what your town council has opined, and that town council's opined that we do not need any subdivision control approval of that way, and she's satisfied that it meets all of the requirements.
So would that essentially... Because I'm used to seeing private ways as a essentially a defined road, much like a public way, that was just never accepted. It's a private way that multifamily homeowners have access to. It's just never finished. And I'm not used to seeing it defined in this way.
There are many private ways. There are historic private ways. There are ancient ways. There are ways that had to be approved by various boards. There are ways that are approved through the subdivision control process. There are any number of different kinds of ways. Town council said that this meets, you know, the requirement of a public way as provided in a multifamily...
Private way.
Right. Private way. Excuse me. Private way. Thank you. Getting late. It's been a long week.
Yep. So I'm inclined, based primarily on guidance from our attorney, to view this potentially as a private way. Mr. Andrews?
Again, if you view it as a private way, there's no way to create the lots unless you go through subdivision control. You can't create frontage with an A and R on a private way.
So I think...
It has to be an approved public way in order to create frontage through subdivision control and through the A and R process. So you can't create these lots. The road is not there. You can't create frontage on a road that's not there. You just said that they own the parcel. They've never divided out the road.
And it sounds like their intention is not to even do that in a legal manner that's going to create legal lots.
And you don't have any frontage.
So I think we're always going to have this issue as far as like the multifamily development, but with the multifamily development, I think it takes care of those issues.
And just an additional piece of information, I've got a copy of the September 22, 2014 site plan approval, the original approval for this. The planning board grants this petition with the following acknowledgements. The road is to be and remain as a private way and not maintained by the town. Any maintenance of plowing, sanding, maintenance of the road, parking areas, landscaping, and terrain structures, and devices, as well as utilities and other infrastructures of the county-owned property of the Condo Union Association. So that's the express determination with respect to the private ways determined by this board in 2014.
And I think that's also how we protect the people of the town as opposed to the, you know, say the past Yalane, where there's, you know, nobody's taking care of that one. But that's the condo association is going to be taking care of the road.
And all the... Everything. Everything within the property is the condo association's ownership. So the other thing I struggle with is just the minimal frontage that would be required for a multifamily development as a whole, notwithstanding those lots, whether those are assessors' lots, are they just exhibit lots, whatever lots they might be defined as. My understanding is that a multifamily development as a whole is required to meet those dimensional requirements as it relates to acreage and as it would relate also to frontage for the 150 feet of frontage. That's my understanding. I understand your position is that the frontage would not apply. Can I hear the basis for that determination and why you believe it doesn't apply?
So Judge Vay ruled that the specific requirements of 167-12, which is the multifamily development bylaw, control over the general dimensional requirements in 167-10, and that's where you get the description of frontage, which then refers to the table. And so there's no frontage requirement for multifamily development in 167-12. Then you have a problem of 167-7, which we've talked about ad for night on, where it says that each building has to be on a lot with continuous frontage. And town council says, well, I think that that means that each lot, each of the lots that we're creating with continuous frontage where the buildings are located, has to have 150 feet. So we've redesigned the project, so we're now showing each building on a lot with 150 feet of continuous frontage. And again, the whole purpose of frontage and standards with respect to these ways is to make sure that you have safe access to and from each of these lots. It's not an academic exercise. You know, it's all about public safety, and there's been no suggestion that there's any deficiency whatsoever in the ability to safely get to each of the lots and to each of the buildings there.
That was always a focus of the planning board, and I think we were satisfied as a board on that last time as well.
That the overall 10-acre development did not need the required frontage?
Yep, and that they provided a safe and viable access to the property.
I have the zoning ordinance on my laptop, so if you wouldn't mind, I'm just going to cross-check it here. Mr. Andrews?
On 167-11, the town attorney gave the opinion to the planning board that the original lot needs to start off with 150 feet of frontage.
Don't put it that simple.
And I didn't believe so either, but I did check the video from the actual hearing that are posted online, and she did make that statement during the hearing, because I was of the impression that there was a different view expressed throughout the hearing. But she did make that statement, so I'm inclined to side that way. But I just want to review the regulations. Does anybody have a specific section for that?
11. 11 is the table. 10 is the general requirements.
Mr. Millius, do you have a position on that one or did you already state it?
Sorry, what?
So your position on the frontage there?
Like I said, this has already been looked at and approved. None of the modifications that they're proposing right now have anything to do with that. This is... Like I said, I mean, I've already been over this, the rest of the planning board, the zoning board, like everyone in the town has already seen the way that that was proposed, seen the way it was built, and there have not been any issues as far as that's concerned. I mean, I could look at it again, but I already know that it was satisfied previous, as was everyone else.
If I might know, if you're going to look at your dimensional table, it speaks to minimum lot and continuous frontage. The parcel... Parcel is 10 acres for creating the minimal lots with continuous frontage consistent with town council.
I appreciate that the lots that are being created, again conflating what a lot is, meet the requirements for the frontage. My clarification that I'd like to better understand is the requirement on whether or not the overall 10-acre development prior to any sort of creation of lots would need to meet that frontage requirement.
Again, I don't know how to answer that question any better than I have.
Ms. Trup, do you have anything to add to that?
The usual. Where two or more requirements of this chapter are applicable to the same open space that which imposes the greatest restriction on the placement of the building will control. The frontage of a lot will be measured between the distance of three points... So it refers to frontage. This whole chapter refers to the chart. And what zone is this being built in?
Agricultural residential AR.
So dimensions for continuous frontage of a lot are 150 feet.
Right, then you got footnote one that says 75 feet. Where's footnote one? Get up front, thank you.
Just as far as the lot and parcel, obviously that exists and they're not trying to create something, you know, that working with what we've already created.
Which one are you referring to?
The overall parcel.
Right, the overall parcel exists. But how much frontage does it have on Elm Street?
It's around 70 feet. 74. 70 something. And again, I don't know what's... So then the Planning Board and the Zoning Board have already approved the multifamily development with the existing frontage on Elm Street. The issue has always been, always been, with respect to each of the individual lots, whether there's a requirement of 150 feet of continuous frontage. So if you wanna go back and, I guess, reverse the Planning Board's prior decisions and the Zoning Board's prior decisions to impose a further requirement that the original 10-acre parcel have 150 feet of frontage, that's contrary to what this board has done. It's contrary to what the Zoning Board's done. It's not anything that we're only requesting here. You're just going back and essentially substituting a different requirement than what was previously considered by the board and found to be acceptable.
So the Zoning Board gave you a variance on your road frontage?
There's no requirement of a variance.
Your Planning Board letter states that multifamily, um, let's see, that you need to follow zoning chapter 167-7D2 and all other Halifax zoning regulations.
You have standard language in all of your...
Those are there for reasons.
Ms. Trup, you have standard language in all of your decisions that say the same thing, that you've gotta comply with all of the other provisions of the Town's requirements. The same language exists within the Zoning Board of Appeals special permit and the same language exists in every single permit that I've reviewed.
But why? If it's there, why is it, should it be ignored?
It's a catch-all so that, so that the board says if you need any additional requirements, that our approvals...
No, it's so that you need to follow the rules. That's why it's stated.
No, ma'am, you again misunderstand. It's standard language in every permit that says that if there's some other requirement that you need, a conservation permission approval, a board of health approval, ultimately your building permit, that our approval, you need to comply with these other requirements. It's not a directive that you get specific relief.
You would need to get a variance on the road frontage.
We were not required to get a variance for the approval of multifamily development.
How?
Because, Ms. Trup, the multifamily development bylaw did not require any minimum frontage in order to do it having a lot area requirement of 10 acres and a density requirement.
But all of our lots in town need 150 feet of frontage?
No, ma'am. This is a special hybrid. Again, I didn't draft the bylaw. This is how the bylaw was... We have disagreements as to what the purpose of the bylaw...
Where is this zone? What zone is it in? What zone is this being built in?
I'm not here to answer questions on cross-determination.
Do you not wanna answer it? Because if it's in agricultural, then it's 150 feet of frontage.
No, ma'am, not for a multifamily development.
So there's, there's a different view there. We're well aware of the position that you believe that the lots don't need to have the required 150 feet of frontage that would otherwise be required for a single-family traditional development or even for that matter for a commercial development or any other development. From what I gathered, your position is that because it's silent on the frontage requirement for a multifamily development, whereas otherwise there are other specific dimensional requirements that there is no frontage requirement. So somebody could theoretically build a development with five feet of frontage or 20 feet of frontage if you could squeeze a road in there.
It could be approved as well.
Right, so there's obviously the safety issues and all that.
I have no idea whether that would be acceptable, that...
In a theoretical world, right.
As a board, we are able to prove that the construction of that road was no different than any other road.
Right, and it was approved in the past.
And to the, like I said, it's built to the same standard of any other road.
Right.
I don't think your council would have it happen, but the first came to the Planning Board and they wanted to build a house for themselves and a house for themselves, or their sons. They wanted two dwellings. The Town turned them down because they didn't have 150 feet of frontage. So the whole town does 150 feet of frontage and I don't understand why they're changing it now.
But the Town obviously has not always had that.
It proves.
It's not like every house in town has 150 feet of frontage.
Well, we put in these zoning bylaws because of the smaller lots that went in in 1976 and it's been added to in the years from because of schools being overcrowded and having to send elementary school kids to Pembroke and having double...
That all stands. I guess the question in front of us is, based on the zoning, the way it's written, do we believe that this development is required to have any frontage? I think in the, in the past, the project had been approved. I think there's been some differing opinions on how that road would have created frontage because if it were done through a subdivision control, you would essentially be creating new frontage for those parcels. Ultimately, I think the zoning is very poorly written and it leads to these kind of issues where it's silent on certain issues. It appears to conflict, have conflicting direction in certain areas. And it makes it challenging where there's been prior approvals. And we need to focus, I think, what's in our purview here, right? So let's revisit what we have authority over under the site plan review process.
Jim, or I don't know if it's the same, but we could also look at like the difference because really they're just coming in for modification. So we can clearly just look at it and say, okay, what is the difference between the modification and the original approved thing? Because as far as I'm concerned, the original approved thing is fine. There's nothing wrong with it, it's approved. So if we look at it just as far as the changes and the modifications, they are very minimal. The modifications would be the lot lines that... So as far as the impact of the property, the safety, those things have not changed. The modifications don't, in my mind, don't impact that at all, right? It's gonna be a couple lines on a piece of paper. The impact on the town is no different. The impact on the road is no different. It's already been approved and safe. The modifications don't change any of those things. These modifications don't affect anything that made us approve it in the first place.
Okay.
Mr. Andrews? So this is a new site plan that's been submitted tonight. So it should be sent out to all the other boards and you should have time...
This is the same site plan as was submitted?
It was not submitted last week, it was submitted yesterday.
So as Town Council has said, it's perfectly appropriate to come in and see modification of the original site plan. The base plan is the original site plan with the modifications that we're providing. And Town Council said we don't need, we don't need to restart the process because it's perfectly appropriate to do this.
But the point is that all the other boards in town have not been given an opportunity to view this. And typically they're given 30 days to view this new submission.
Again, this is a modification. I think we should all agree on that. And I don't think that, just like any, a lot of these that come through in the life of any of these proposals, they change or slight modifications come in. That's not strange at all. And there's no reason to think that this modification is of any great impact.
And we have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to see modification of our special permit. So the Zoning Board of Appeals is gonna have to review and approve this also to move forward, to get building permits for this. So you're assured that this is going to be reviewed by the relevant parties that deal with zoning. We're not, we're not changing the road layout. There are no fire safety issues. There are no, and to the extent that there are any fire safety issues, I assume those will be addressed in connection with the building permit where you have to demonstrate compliance with all the building code and fire code requirements. But there's no changed traffic or any other public safety interest here. Same number of units, same number of vehicles. The road is built and done. No line of sight, no changing line of sight issues. It's the same. So, I mean, the suggestion that these go out is simply an attempt to delay this because Mr. Andrews knows that we're under deadlines with the land court. So it's a, it's a strategy or a tactic, I should say.
So Mr. Webby, I have a question for you. As it relates to four-unit townhomes, do you know if those are subject to sprinkling requirements?
Yes, they are.
Would that change anything from a fire flow perspective or from the fire department's access as it relates to hydrants or their services to those units?
No, there's plenty of water. Plenty of water pressure and I believe we put in eight-inch pipes. Yeah, I can't find it right off of the size of the water main. Oh, excuse me, it's an eight-inch water main, which is the same as any standard subdivision.
Have you done load testing either before or after the installation of those water mains in the street?
No, I have not done it. I don't know if Cat brought it in.
Okay.
Or if the one...
Mr. Andrews?
Just one other point. They have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and claim that this is a substantial difference than the previous plans. So if this is a substantial difference, I'm asking this board to give the other boards in town the ability to review it.
Again, from a zoning board perspective, I think that's a determination that they're gonna have to make, whether or not...
It's actually a Planning Board decision.
Whether or not it's a substantial change?
Yes.
It's up, you find it's up to us to decide for the zoning board whether or not the plan that gets submitted for reconsideration is a substantial change?
Yes.
Yeah, see, I don't see how that makes sense. They have a whole different criteria and things that they're looking at. So how can we, as a board, decide what's important to them? That doesn't make sense. Right, that's up to them.
Ms. Quest, all that applies.
Yeah, so Town Council has opined on this under 48th Section 16. So the Planning Board determines whether it's a different, substantially different project to warrant avoiding the two-year bar. And she, I think you'll agree that she, she says that, that we're consistent with that. That the relocation of the buildings is sufficient, that this is a different project than what was proposed, sufficient to satisfy the requirements under 48th Section 16 and the Ranny versus Board of Appeals, a man topic case.
So the question of the plan, what was denied by the Zoning Board of Appeals, did that have the four-unit buildings on it?
No, so we went to the Zoning Board of Appeals with respect to the plan without the lines that you had asked us to go and they said, no, we don't wanna do that. So we're gonna have to take, if you, if you grant this modification, we will take this plan and go to...
But the one that was denied had two-unit buildings. It did not have four-unit buildings.
Correct, 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 with no more. So, I mean, this is a, in some respects, it's the identical plan. In some respects, it's not the identical plan because we have a different configuration of units and a different location of those units on the newly created lots. And I believe that satisfies the requirements of Ranny as suggested by the Town Council.
How do you create newly created lots?
Again, I believe the applicant's position is that those are not illegal lots necessarily other than lots demonstrating frontage on a private way.
Again, I'm just asking for time for my counsel to review this.
So I, maybe I, again, it's getting late, I'm gonna punch it. I think, I think Town Council's putting, putting the bonus on 48th Section 16 on the ZBA, not the Planning Board?
I'm seeing that in the third paragraph, I believe, I said.
The ZBA must consider the applicability of and must determine. So it's really the ZBA's finding as to whether or not we can revisit that special permit. I'm gonna stand corrected on that. And the ZBA will kinda look too ratty for guidance on that. So the ZBA will need to get findings for compliance with 48th Section 16.
And that again appears to be a supermajority, but we need to determine that, right?
I, I, I... A supermajority needs to determine whether to grant the modification. I don't know whether a supermajority needs to determine to issue the findings, so I will defer to Town Council on that.
Mr. Andrews?
Could you look at the definition of frontage and street under the zoning law?
Mark, can I borrow your book? I hope you have an extra one here. Can I borrow your book? For the record, "Frontage: The distance between adjacent intersections of lot and street sidelines measured in a continuous line along the street sideline over which access to the lot must be attainable and tangent to which and within all lot lines a circle, the diameter of which is not less than 80% of the minimum lot size frontage set forth in 167-11 of this chapter may be located." See definition of yard, front, side, and year. Where?
See if you look up the definition of street now.
"Street: A public way established by or maintained under public authority or shown on a plan approved by the board."
It's not a public way.
I just wanted to point out that the multifamily definition does say that it may have frontage on a private way.
Correct, so further conflating more inconsistencies in the zoning.
Except for this is a multifamily development, so only that should apply, correct?
Like the... That is, I think, the determination that the subsection under which multifamily is defined essentially overrides the definitions of the traditional dimensional requirements that would be found in other sections of it. Was that 167-12? What's the subsection for the multifamily? 167-712?
167-12.
So for the record, for everybody's knowledge, a multifamily development, one, the number of units in a multifamily development shall not exceed the number of acres in the parcel on which they are to be built. And this project meets that requirement. Two, eighty percent of the total parcel area tested on a 200-by-200-foot grid must be found to be perccable by the Board of Health. I believe that was previously found to meet the requirement as well. The minimum parcel size shall be ten acres. I think the undivided lot meets that requirement. No unit shall have any more than two and one-half stories, which may contain any amount of living space. This limitation will be enforced by a covenant with the purchaser of each unit. I believe that the buildings as constructed and proposed comply with the height requirement?
Correct.
Five, the minimum front setback shall be seventy-five feet, the minimum rear yard shall be one hundred feet, and there shall be at least one hundred feet between any two buildings. In addition, the required thirty-foot minimum side yard between the development and adjacent properties shall be maintained as a vegetated buffer area free of parking or any structures, and any changes in its natural state shall require approval by the special permit granting Does the project comply with those dimensional requirements?
It doesn't have a thirty-foot buffer around it.
Does it not?
It doesn't have a thirty-foot buffer.
It was approved to comply with that requirement.
It doesn't have a thirty-foot buffer around the lot.
Are you talking about the roadway along the entry? In that there's not a thirty-foot buffer?
They're saying that that's all part of the lot, it's not different, which was the first holdup that you had, that this private way is part of this parcel, so it needs to have the thirty-foot buffer all the way around.
Or, as required by the planning board, the project was redesigned to accommodate Mr. Andrews in the road, and the sidewalk shifted away for him to create the buffer that he was looking for.
It needs to have it all the way around the project, not just...
Which was provided by the planning board, which doesn't...
Is there a thirty-foot buffer along Mr. Andrews' property?
Yes, there is.
Yes. There is not on the opposite side.
How much of a buffer do we have on the other side?
Less than eighteen feet.
So I believe the other of us actually came in, and they were actually fine with the project.
They were not, they were not fine with the project.
Okay, so the other people were in, and they were fine with the project, and they did not have an issue with that.
And the planning board and the zoning board of appeals approved it, that buffer.
Those people came in, we talked to them.
I actually heard of it from them, the opposite.
They were here.
And they were against it?
Okay, let's go through the rest of them. Number six, minimum residential floor area, no multifamily housing, whether condominium or rental, shall be erected, reconstructed, modeled, or altered so that the lowest level, i.e. the ground floor equivalent of living space per dwelling unit, in a unit contains less than seven hundred fifty square feet. Does this project comply with that requirement?
Yes.
Okay. Seven, fire protection condominium developments. A, every multifamily development, whether condominium or rental, built after 1984, shall install a automatic fire protection system in each building. This system shall not include the smoke detection systems unless so directed by the state building code or mass general law, Chapter 148, Section 26(c). The automatic fire protection system shall be wired into the fire station, the alarm notification system shall be compatible to the present alarm notification system. All expenses of the installation, including the tie-in at the fire station, shall be borne by the developer. The system shall be approved by the fire chief before any construction is started on the site. Maintenance of the system shall be the responsibility of the owner of the condominium association, if any. Did the fire chief approve these plans at the building permit stage with the original development?
Yes.
I imagine they have not seen the latest plan from us today.
Correct, we'll have to go through that process and connect with the building permit.
Okay, seven B, every multifamily development, whether condominium or rental, built after 1984, shall have a hydrant system which is capable of supplying the required fire flow plus fifty percent. The water main shall not be less than eight inches in diameter, and the system shall be looped, no dead ends. All hydrants shall be set at five hundred feet apart within the development. Does this project comply with that requirement?
Yes.
Is it a looped water system?
Yeah, I don't know, that was approved by the water department.
But can we take a look right now, it isn't a looped system, right?
No, it is, no.
But it was approved by the water department?
Yes. Yeah, we have a hydrant there, and I believe there's two hydrants. A hydrant here, and a hydrant there.
There's probably one in between, right, because that looks like more than five hundred feet, right? There's three in there.
Could be three, right?
There's probably one on the corner, right?
There may be one right by the, right by the lot lines there.
It would appear, though, that it doesn't technically meet the looping requirement of that subsection, right?
I can't answer that now, no.
Okay. Seven C, every multifamily development, whether condominium or rental, shall supply adequate space in front of each building for fire operators to search to approach the buildings. This open space shall be kept open at all times. If said space is blocked by a vehicle, it shall be towed at the owner's expense. This order to tow may be given by either the police or fire department. That is what it is. Is there any further discussion from the public or the applicant?
Would you say that the site plan and special permit do not create a private way? They have to be created under subdivision control. Whether or not the town accepts the road, like you said previously, is a different
Okay, I think, in respect to that particular provision, we do have counsel's opinion based on the memorandum that she issued dated November 20th, that a private way has been created and currently exists at the property.
Just to point out, the whole court case, this was said that that was a driveway, and there were no lots there, so this is a complete flip by the town and the developer to say that this is a private way and it's creating frontage. For the last two years, it's been interpreted that that was a driveway, and there was no frontage based off of it.
And I think the distinction between a driveway, my understanding of how it's being interpreted, unfortunately, counsel, our counsel cannot be here today, but my understanding is based on Mr. Brodsky's, I won't call it testimony, his statements today, are that any way, anything that provides access to something else would constitute a private way, as opposed to being created through the subdivision control process, because we wouldn't create new roadways as private or public ways that would be creating frontage for the purpose of frontage as defined by the zoning ordinance. I think the distinction in this case is that the frontage requirement for the lots is not legal frontage on a public road.
Where do you find that two different laws are defined in this own board? Because they're not, there is no different definition for a multifamily lot, it just says lot. So that's an interpretation that is nowhere in the zoning bylaws.
And again, I think outside of the interpretation of the zoning bylaw, I think is unfortunately not within our purview.
But that's an interpretation that has not been agreed to by the zoning board. The zoning board didn't say that the lots weren't lots. The zoning board originally said no lots were needed. Now, you have a different attorney's opinion, so all I'm saying is, don't vote tonight, extend it for two weeks, and give me opportunity to have my counsel come in. I'm sure that the judge will extend. If I have my attorney ask the judge to extend along with Mr. Brodsky, I'm sure that he'll give us another, in fact, the decision is actually due on December 6th to the judge, so if your next meeting is the 5th, it would still give him time to write a letter to the judge.
And I think, just to clarify, we did extend last time, and I think we were extending it more than one meeting into the future. Do we know what date we actually extended the...
So I think you're talking about two different things, so Mr. Andrews is talking about my court.
Right, right, but we also...
I just want to go on the record, Mr. Andrews and his attorney have opposed every request that we've had to continue the stay. Now, he proceeds it made to his advantage to have his attorney request for an extension, it's, it's, we don't, we don't want to belabor this any...
And we're not, we can't opine on what's going to happen after the fact?
And let me, let me, so that, so that they actually requested reconsideration of the court's most recent stay, and as a result of that, the judge added additional requirements to us to report to him by December 6th. So not only did they oppose this day, they asked for reconsideration of this day, and as a result, they've reduced the odds of me getting a further stay, which is why, which is why we're requesting please a decision tonight, so that we have sufficient time for how to get in front of the zoning board of appeals, you know, with respect to that, with the impending holiday, I don't even know mechanically how I can get that done and satisfy the public those requirements. And so nothing is going to change, you know, of any of the information presented to you. I had to cancel my personal plans tonight to be here, because this was so important. I was to be in Boston, to be honored for some charity work that I do, I had not attended that to be here, so that's the stuff that we need to do in order to get things done.
Correct.
Mr. Andrews?
He can speak first.
So, Mr. Brodsky was not able to be here at the last meeting?
It was your attorney.
And we're not going to argue over who needs to be where.
I just think, you extended out the hearing, the public hearing, to December 27th, which was well beyond what was already issued by the court. So the discussion over what needs to go to the court and what this board needs to do are two different things, because this board is not bound by the court.
I understand we're not legally obligated to vote today based on the extension or the continuation to the hearing, right? So, do you know what date it was actually extended to?
I'm looking it up right now, December 23rd.
I mean, these plans were submitted yesterday.
The meeting was, the last meeting was the 19th, so they extended it to the 23rd, is what you had asked for.
So, I think we had asked for that, and they agreed to it.
As a board, we have to vote on this when we're ready, right? Really, unfortunately, their deadlines and things are, you know, if we're ready to vote on it, that's the right time to do it. As far as the delay goes, it's, it just seems kind of strange, where like, you know, it's not us asking for an extension or the applicant, like, how many times would we let, you know, that process get delayed by someone other than us or the applicant? You know what I mean? That's really, the timeframe should be set around us, you know, if you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So I think to have, not trying to like, not give you opportunity, but you can't just have, if we had thirty different people come in, you can't have them all say, "Oh, hey, I can't do this for six months." We can't be delaying things, especially if we're ready to make a decision.
Which is why we have the statutory requirements, the timelines, and we have to request extensions from the applicants where we're up against those timelines. And I think we're at the point today where, although you may like us to vote today, we're not legally obligated to, that's going to force essentially a non-decision approval. Mrs. Andrews?
I would think that the board would want their attorney here, because she's given two come-lookings statements, one, she first said, a hundred and fifty feet of frontage on the beginning, now she's changed it, so I really think you need to have your lawyer here, because you decide that you don't need a hundred and fifty feet of frontage on the street, and now, how much does that open up hell effects to, to other people doing the same thing, "Oh, I don't need the frontage, they did it, so I don't have to do it, I don't have to lose to you a hundred and fifty feet of frontage." I think you need to have his counsel here also as well, because we, as a citizen, as a resident here, doesn't he have, aren't you supposed to protect his rights too?
We're supposed to interpret the zoning ordinance and understand whether or not the plans that are submitted meet the requirements in order to protect the town as a whole, not any one individual.
And just, you know, we've already discussed this, this has already been a position that the town held through all boards and all permitting processes, has already held the position that this is okay. The modification doesn't change that, that already exists, that's not being altered, no proposed changes to that. That's something that everyone in town agreed on already, this has already been through all these processes. So, if the question is whether or not the town would approve, the town already has approved that. Anyone who had a statement came in, and we took these things into consideration. So, we've had, the part on the frontage of the road, as far as I'm concerned, we've already gone over. I mean, I know not everyone's been here, but I've gone over this for years, you know, and that's not, that was not the issue, that is not what's part of the modification.
And I think my problem is that there's been so many different interpretations on the multifamily submissions as they come in, between the one across from Harmony, whatever that one was called, there were certain requirements that applied to that that don't appear to apply to this, and other multifamily developments that have been done in the past, which is very difficult to point to prior projects as precedent, or even things that we've done.
I'm just saying, this one, just on this one, this one is approved, this one was approved by every board in town, the applicant satisfied, every single person, every board, every permitting process, they've already satisfied with that. So to bring it up or stop to question it now, I don't understand that, that's not part of the modification.
I think that's part of the process that we're reviewing here today, in that unfortunately, it was determined through the appeal process that it didn't meet certain requirements and needed to come back through the permitting process, which is why we're all here today.
Which I, which I agree, but I think that that part, that it didn't satisfy them, was just the lot lines, it had nothing to do with anything else.
And again, the appeal was the building permits, there's never been an appeal of a site plan approval of a special permit that remains in lawful effect. This question was the appeal concern, only the issue is the building permits.
That's what I'm saying, so I don't see why there's any reason to doubt the validity of any of that, it's already approved.
I appreciate that, that the problem that I have hesitating with are some of these dimensional things that are in here, specifically in that subsection, we've got that buffer requirement. The road's built, the lot lines are there, right? So essentially, we would have to essentially identify and acknowledge that the project doesn't meet that, and allow it to move forward. And the same thing too with the frontage. And the same thing too with the frontage. Notwithstanding the fact that it was previously approved, I look at the previous hearing that we had where Attorney Questle noted in that hearing that she believed that it did need to have 150 feet of frontage for a multifamily development. I understand that may not have been the position in the past, but that's what our counsel indicated in the last hearing. So if nothing else, I'm not entirely satisfied that this as currently proposed absolutely meets their requirements. As it relates to the private way, I think there's enough information there that the frontage of these lots as currently proposed would satisfy that requirement. So I think that the two things that I think I'm a little unclear on are the requirement for the overall tenement lot, having the frontage requirement and the setback on the sidelines which are not being provided. How that impacts what we would do here. From a functional perspective, I don't know that the setback issue is a material problem. I think that's just a procedural thing that we would have to acknowledge. The same with the looping of the water main. I think from a life safety perspective, that's something that the water department has opined on and acknowledged will provide the level of safety that would be required for these developments. So those two I'm not as concerned about, even if they would deviate from the formal requirement of that particular subsection. The one thing I would like to slam the door shut on because I don't want to be back here again in a few months after it goes through legal process costing everybody more time and money is to have that be the next issue that brings us all back here again.
So there's a functional problem, Mr. Scully, with your approach, which is that when you come in for a modification, the only issues that are subject to the modification are those that are being changed when there's an existing unappealed approval. Each of those two issues that you have raised are related to the original unappealed approval, I think, or beyond the scope of the request for modification. So if you deny the modification because of those two issues that do nothing, it would be acting in accordance with your authority.
So in layman's terms, is it, I guess, your position that the only things we're allowed to look at are the functional performance of the project more so than any compliance with portions of the project that have not changed?
So the only thing that you should be reviewing are the proposed changes that are the subject of the request for modification, but that you don't have the ability to go back and revisit the prior approvals that were not appealed and have been in place for now six years?
Yes. I agree with that. I mean, how many other, I can't think of any other project and somebody else, I'd love to speak up, of anything that's got permitted and gone this far in the process that's somehow changed later or possibly been revoked.
That would be a regulatory taking. You can't take our permit away for something that's been approved and unappealed.
You know, so as far as, you know, as boards change and members change, when they left here, we gave them the same thing that we give everyone else. This, you are okay with us to take this on to the next board. You've satisfied everything. Good luck. So when the people on the boards change or things like that, that should not affect a pre-existing permit or approval. You know what I mean? So once this is approved, it's crazy to have just new people in and then you're going to try to stop the project then after it's already been approved. I don't understand that.
You could say, you could deny the request for modification because you don't want to approve the changes. You can't revisit the prior approval that's been in place because you're functionally taking away a legal right that's already been granted to us and hadn't been appealed. And that's what you're risking here by revisiting those issues.
Yeah, we can't say yes and then no. I don't understand that.
And again, I think that's the problem we're running into is I wasn't here as part of those original approvals, so I don't know what was agreed to as part of that or even discussed or considered as part of compliance or non-compliance, so.
That's all I can say is that we went over this for a long time.
And unfortunately, the decisions are very poorly written where it just says you're approved. Congratulations, basically.
Correct, but you can't take our rights away from us. You can deny the changes and my hope is that you don't and that you would have substantial reasons to deny the changes since those changes are what's being recommended to us by the various town officials as well as town council. But you can't take those underlying site plan approvals away from us because you now, six years later, maybe questioned the original decision and the wisdom of that decision.
Or the basis of that decision.
It's unappealed. We relied upon those permits. That's beyond the scope of what we're asking you to do.
So in your opinion, what is, what are the modifications that are subject to our review as part of this site plan reviewed in front of us today?
The reconfiguration of the lots so that you have four lots, the relocation of the buildings so that you, each building on an individual lot with continuous frontage on a public or private way and based upon your town council's opinion that each of those lots needs to have 150 feet of frontage on that private way. That's what we provide.
Okay. Mr. Andrews?
Didn't town council opine to the planning board that you guys don't have an ability within the site plan approval to do a modification? It has to be annual approval? Isn't that what she said in that September meeting?
My understanding was that... She, whatever she said, we had voted at that hearing to allow it to be submitted as a modification to the previous approval, notwithstanding whatever may have been said. I believe there was a formal vote at the end of that hearing that allowed that to happen.
So the current plan that's approved shows six different lots with complexes on them. So if you don't approve their modification, which you don't have to, then they would still have an approved site plan and approved special permit. That's not being taken away from them. So they can build to what they said they were going to do, which was the different plots and the judge found in order to create the lots and do a subdivision.
Except they can't build, right? So that's why we're all here today.
You can't get the building permit.
You can't get a building permit.
Mr. Andrews objects to the building permit.
Because you're not meeting the requirements of what was submitted in 2014 and 2015, which Mr. Sealy pointed out in his memo in the very beginning, that the only next step to appeal would be the building permits.
Because he's arguing that each lot needs to have 150 feet of frontage. So what we're trying to do is do what Mr. Andrews wants us to do. Now he doesn't want us to do it because he doesn't want the project.
No, Mr. Andrews is telling you that you have to use subdivision control in order to create 150 feet of frontage. Town council also told the zoning board that they didn't have to take her interpretation. They could come up with their own interpretation.
And again, distinctions on zoning board, planning board, and what we have within our purview. But I appreciate the process and I would be inclined to view the roadway that's there, the driveway, the roadway as a private way. And my position would be that I would think that the roadway would need the frontage, but if your position is that that's not within our purview to revisit that or...
I would ask you to get an opinion from town council before you take that.
And that's where I'm going. So ultimately, if those are outside of our purview, and I think we should discuss it before we offer anything to the applicant here, but if those are outside of our purview, we're not allowed to look at that. And the only thing that's within our purview is to determine whether or not the development as proposed with the buildings on the lots as shown on the plan meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance as currently written, which I interpret to be basically the big sticking point is do they have frontage on a way? We have language from our zoning council that appears to indicate that she agrees that a way does exist and that whatever lots these may be, if not even the conventional lots as defined by the ordinance, provide that required frontage. So I would be inclined to believe that this would meet the intent of the zoning ordinance. The problem that I have is that the frontage and those setback issues, I would have, I would want to get clarification on our purview. And if our purview is limited to just the things that I mentioned, then I think I would be of the position that this plan would meet the requirements based on the feedback we've gotten today.
Would it, if you thought about it just as far as any other modification plan that happened throughout a building process, if that's all that they were proposing as a modification, all they are proposing is a modification, is that? Like, as far as, I don't know that we necessarily have to have a limited scope, but that's how you would always approach the modification, right? What impact does the modification have? Anytime anyone brought in a modification, you would never start from scratch or revisit the whole thing, right? Typically, in a modification, you would say, okay, what are the changes? What are the impact of the changes? And that would be your scope, if you know what I'm saying. So in a typical, or in all modifications, I think that's how we've always approached them. We've never, you know, gone back and started finding tooth combing the whole thing. It's always just been look at the impact of modification. But I understand, if you're not comfortable with it, then like, that's...
And I think we're all aware that this is a contentious project and it's likely not forecasting.
If you want to ask, that's like perfectly...
I want to get it right.
Yep.
No, I'd back you up on that. Sorry, other discussion from the board?
I've said what I have to say.
Carlos, I don't know if you're intending to want to have more information from town council or out of town council at one of your meetings. I believe Joanna, the council had sent, and you had forwarded to the planning board members available dates. I know she's in Providence Town every Thursday between now and Christmas. So the regular board meetings, the schedule for the 7th and 21st, she wouldn't be able to attend. So if the planning board wants town council to be here for one of their meetings, they'll need to do it on and off Thursday.
I don't know if you saw that.
Right, I saw that she was unavailable on certain dates.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So Thursdays, she was not available. So our negative scheduled meeting on the 5th, she would not be available. Would you, would the members entertain an alternate date prior to the decision date of the 6th?
No, I'm prepared to go tonight.
Okay.
I think that we have town council from Huxham to the judgment to now we have Amy Caswell, plus she was here for the hearings in September. I mean, how many times are we going to go back and forth and get the same opinions back and forth?
I think I'm, so I guess on what basis?
If you want time, I'm certainly cool with that. If Carlos, definitely. If you think it's best to get town council first, I'd show up for a special meeting.
Is that something you would entertain?
I don't know. It's a crazy, crazy, crazy month and I think that we have... I mean, this is full.
Yeah, but you have a member who wants some clarification.
I understand.
So you're kind of denying him the opportunity.
I'm, no, I'm just stating my opinion.
You know what I'm saying?
No, I'm not denying, I'm just going.
And that's fine, but what would be the basis of your decision? I don't know if you necessarily need to share that, but I think if this project were to get denied, it would have to have a basis for it. Because as of right now, I'm not inclined to vote yes or no. I would like to get feedback from council on the two questions of whether or not the project requires the frontage. If it were a brand new project starting from scratch and the second part is whether or not those issues would be within the purview. Because the problem I see is that if it becomes part of the record that multifamily developments do not require frontage, then I think that sets precedent for other projects in the future. I think the way issue I'm comfortable with, the frontage of the lots that we have, I'm comfortable with. I think all the other regulatory requirements I'm comfortable with. I think it's just that one issue, and if it's not within our purview, then it's not within our purview.
Yeah, so I can't tell you that it is or not. I don't know how to answer that except for we would never do it on a modification. That's just a strange thing to do.
What was the second thing that you...
So the two issues that I still have are clear.
I'm writing them down because I don't want to get confused.
That's what I'm saying, that's what the second...
Is it required frontage on whether or not a multifamily development would be traditionally required to have the 100 feet of frontage that's identified in the zoning table? And the second, I think, more important issue is whether or not those, any other issues other than just the reconfiguration of the building and some of the infrastructure to service those buildings is outside our purview. So essentially, even if it were to otherwise require the setbacks and the buffers and all the things that we just read through the list of requirements, if those aren't within our purview, then...
How can it not be within our purview if they're in the list of our section?
But I think we heard from council here, and again, it's one council's opinion. We have our council as well, that those items, we have a somewhat narrow focus in terms of the review that we have of the site plan in front of us. And that review is limited to the changes, which include clustering the buildings and creating the lot lines on which those clustered buildings are contained. Those are essentially the only changes and whether or not those modifications comply with the zoning ordinance.
I can't see a different, if we start going through this plan and going to things other than the modification, it's the same thing as just pulling a plan out of a drawer and saying, hey, this lot's got 150 feet of something, you know? But that's not really what we're supposed to be doing and it's not, never what we have done. You know, this is an approved plan. I don't think it's the, I don't think we're here to go through old approvals and figure out whether or not we're okay with it.
And traditionally, they would be back in front of us again, right? So there's a reason the applicant's in front of us is because this is an ongoing case. It's an active...
Yeah, and a modification. That's why we should be looking at the modification, not the, not the things that we've already approved and told them we're okay. We've already told them it's fine, right?
But if there's something that got approved that clearly doesn't meet the zoning regulations, then is it then okay to approve something that clearly doesn't meet those regulations if we believe that to be the case?
Like I said, I think that there are a lot of things that if you, if we started going through, you find them, that's not really what we're supposed to be doing.
So my point is, I would like to get clarification from council. I would be inclined to think that the plan meets the requirements if council clarified what was in our scope.
I would be in support of that.
So to that point, I think we would have to have another off-schedule hearing in order to resolve.
Where are those dates?
So I think next week is going to be problematic for everybody. Is there a date that would work for you? For...
I, I... Monday, December 2nd. Tuesday, I have six hearings on. Wednesday, December 4th.
According to Town Council, not myself.
Does the 2nd work? I think that would work for me.
Did you state that it didn't work?
No, 2nd is available.
Tuesday does not work, right?
The 2nd. It depends on how my day goes.
It would be for 7:30, does that work for you?
Mark?
7:30 on Monday, the 2nd?
Let's push it out, let's do, it would be the, I think the only thing on the agenda for that day, so we could do it at 6:30. Would that work for you?
Yes.
Those are the only two outstanding issues that I'd like to get clarification from Town Council on. Is there anything else that anybody else would like to get clarification with?
I already emailed the stuff that I needed clarification today.
Okay. Would you like to share that for the record?
I don't have it in front of me, it's on email.
To me? Did you email that to me?
I replied to everybody.
Okay, it's printed in, so we could get clarification on what those items are.
Would you say 6:30?
So it would be the 2nd would be in addition to the 5th, so we'd have two meetings that would be separate?
Yes.
That would be just?
Just a meeting for this public here. So the questions are, it's one email, right? How does a private way get created? And can we clarify at what point or who determined it was a private way?
Could you just repeat the last, the 2nd?
So can we get clarification on who indicated that this is a private way and at what point it was created as a private way?
Could a copy of the plan be given to the attorney? She hasn't seen the plan yet.
Your attorney?
Town attorney's office.
Yeah, absolutely. So please provide her all the information correspondence that we've had between the submitted plans. If you could also please provide Town Attorney a copy of the submitted plans that were being discussed today.
I can't usually read my notes after I write them anyway. I don't know what that says.
I don't either, but I figured you knew what it meant.
Oh, that's what Callis was saying, I guess.
Do we have any motions to continue the hearing to the next public hearing on Monday, December 2nd, 6:30?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing on December 2nd at 6:30 PM.
Second? All second. All this in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Can we get a motion to, we don't need a motion, we're back in the-
Make a motion to return to the regular scheduled planning board meeting.
Second? Second. All this in favor?
Aye.
I think that's it, right?
Are you good for tonight?
Hope so.
Man, I did it again.
Well, just the other, the other five items, you know?
Oh, excuse me. I'm spread out all over the place.
Is there a motion to, uh?
Close?
Continue?
Yeah.
Indefinitely.
Jeez. So a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Yay.
Second favor?
Aye.
Aye.